Good evening. I will call the June Common Council meeting to all order here. All alderpersons are present with the exception of alderpersons Graff and Zurfluh, who expressed they could not be here this evening. Item three, we're going to pass and move on to item number four, which is the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a silent prayer in lieu of invocation. I invite you to please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amen. And there are some more chairs in the back that are stacked up. So if individuals want to take a seat, there are some kind of on this side and I'm not sure if I can't quite see if there's any in the back. So if you can just, we'll give you a minute to get settled if you want to come in and grab a seat. Item five on our agenda this evening is the explanation of the visitor's speaking procedure. Individuals wishing to address the body may do so only on items that are appearing before us on our agenda. Individuals that wish to address or wish to speak must raise their hand when the item has been called, so that way an alderperson knows that you want some time yielded to you. If you do get up to the podium, please state your name and your address for the record, and we will do our best to honor the timekeeping of no longer than five minutes on your particular item. And if there's any questions about that process, make sure you indicate your question at the beginning of your speaking. Item number six on our agenda this evening is the administration of fire department ceremonial oaths of office and badge pinning. And first, we'll invite up Group One, which is entry-level firefighters Trent Aldrick, Josh Scheckert, Jake Tim, Chris Heron, and motor pump operators Brian St. Myers and Joel Federer. If you could please come forward.
Please raise your right hands and repeat after me. I state your names.
Aye.
Having been duly selected to serve as, state your position whether you're a firefighter or a motor pump operator.
Having been duly selected to serve as a firefighter.
Of the Fire Department.
Of the Fire Department.
For the City of Wisconsin Rapids.
For the City of Wisconsin Rapids.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And of the State of Wisconsin.
And of the State of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully discharge.
And will faithfully discharge.
The duties of said office.
The duties of said office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
So at this time, we'll invite those that are pinning the badges on forward, please. And we'll invite Group Two, which are Officers Justin Pluse, Lieutenant, Sean Murphy, Lieutenant, Derek Matikowski, Lieutenant, Steve Belter, Lieutenant, Ben Gudrow, Battalion Chief, Michael Sitza, Battalion Chief, and Todd Eckes, Deputy Chief, to the front. Our Group Number Two. You can make your way to the front here.
All right. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your names.
Aye.
Having been duly selected to serve.
Having been duly selected to serve.
As a, state your rank.
As a deputy chief.
Of the Fire Department.
Of the Fire Department.
For the City of Wisconsin Rapids.
For the City of Wisconsin Rapids.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of the State of Wisconsin.
And of the State of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully discharge.
And will faithfully discharge.
The duties of said office.
The duties of said office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
The badge folks that are doing any of the badge pinning forward. Badge pinners, come on forward. Congratulations. And I think they want a group photo, so if you could just face the cameras over to your left. We congratulate each of them on their promotions. And for those that are signing on for the first time with the city, we welcome them to the city and we encourage them all to be safe, and we thank them for their service to the fine city and the residents of Wisconsin Rapids. Item seven on our agenda this evening is the reading of the minutes of the previous meeting, attachment number one in your packets.
Make a motion to accept the previous meeting's minutes?
Motion by Coth and a second by Kellogg. Are there any requests to speak? Seeing no requests to speak, motion is to approve. Please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, six ayes, zero nays.
Item number eight on our agenda this evening is my report. Good evening, council members, staff, and those here watching from home. The Mayor's Youth Council is getting ready for their Kids de Park Day, happening this Saturday at Robinson Park from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m. That event is open to the public and to all members in our community to come and enjoy some time at Robinson Park. It's a free event where kickball will be set up, as well as the library and other activities that will be coordinated by youth council members. The Movie Night Project is moving right along. The group has just wrapped up the poll that they administered, which chose the movie that would be shown for that event. They will also be moving forward with marketing that event in the near future. And that event is happening in July, so watch for that free movie night happening also at Robinson Park, which will feature also a drive-in movie. The Bicycle Benefits Project is making progress, as the youth council is working on their outreach assignment, working with businesses and owners and managers about launching an incentive and a discount program for folks that bike to area businesses that will be offered a discount, and encouraging them to sign up as a supporter to the project. The Beautification Council has, as you've all probably noticed, brought back their hanging baskets, which are entirely sponsored by community members in the community. All the trees from the tree sale have been delivered, and more than two dozen trees were planted across the city in support of the tree planting event this spring. We've also dedicated a City Hall rain garden as a monarch weigh station in the last month. That garden is cared for by a volunteer, Clara Kubashak, a beautification council member, and we thank her and her husband for all their hard work on that project over the last couple of years. The Beautification Council will also meet on Thursday this week to plan for future projects, as well as some of the other projects that they have on their radar. Important to many folks in our community, and top of mind, anyway, is the launch of the Automated Garbage Collection. Letters will be sent to residents, we believe, yet this week, with cart delivery to begin honored before or honored during next week, with all carts being delivered by July 3rd. Automated Garbage Collection is set to begin July 8th, which would be the Monday following the Fourth of July holiday week. Encourage residents to view the information online on WIrapids.org/garbage-recycling. The Park and Rec Commission took action recent last week to pursue the addition of sculptures in our public spaces. Finances were set aside for up to three sculptures as an honorarium from the Park Outlay Fund. A call for sculpture entries is made by the sculpture, will be made by the Sculpture Committee, following standards that are to be developed by the city. Airport construction continues on the parallel taxiway out on that project. We believe on the airport's Facebook page, we continue to share drone aerial footage for folks that want to monitor the project there. There have been some developments and perhaps some setbacks related to the construction of the large commission-owned hangar at the airport due to design challenges within the contract designer. Budget's been established, and more discussion will be had at the next airport commission meeting, but at this point, we were hoping to let the project forbid for the commission hangar at the airport, and that potentially might be delayed. On East Grand Avenue, there has been a number of updates, as you can, as folks can tell, that maybe have walked near the East Grand Avenue reconstruction project. Much of the concrete's been poured on the first phase of that project, and it's moving along nicely. I know the engineering department, in light of some of the other projects, has not been able to push out updates, but continue to watch the city's website for updates, and it sounds as if that project has been derisive ahead of schedule. Weather-dependent, of course, for us to continue down that path. Easttown Plaza downtown remains available for redevelopment, for a redevelopment partner. Tomorrow, we're going to be hosting a walk-through with real estate professionals, encouraging them to make that property available. At a previous discussion of the council, some further environmental activity and review happened, and we continue to market that property. Sunday this week, I believe, marks the unfortunate closure of a major retailer in our community, ShopCo, and alongside that, employment implications. Know that we've continued to discuss that vacancy and opportunity with potential tenants. The real estate has all been bought by another company, and we continue to talk about some desired occupants for that. And so we hope that the new owners of the property will continue to market that space for potential retailers, of which we've got at least four that we're staying in contact with as soon as the ShopCo vacancy occurs. In the category of attended, hosted, and participated, I held a number of coffee sessions this month, one this morning at the library, and one at Four Star Family Restaurant earlier this month, as well as one at the Lowell Center. And I've got a number scheduled in July, which will be announced, but they are July 10th and July 23rd. We conducted some interviews for the Wayfinding Navigational signage to that project that has been discussed, related to the park trail and some of the downtown pedestrian and parking lot signage. We held a bike ride promoting the bike share during Wisconsin Bike Week earlier this month. Staff continues to work toward the implementation of the Munis software that the council has approved, which has entailed quite a bit of training the last couple of weeks. So staff were pulled from their day-to-day responsibilities on a number of occasions last week to participate in Munis software training. Also held a discussion here with members of the Police Department and Lincoln High School Fact, which is the tobacco group at Lincoln High School, which had discussed and sought perhaps some ordinance changes related to electronic cigarettes and vaping, and the impacts that that has had, not only in the schoolhouse, but also some concerns they have around public health. Last evening, the Wisconsin Rapids Noon Rotary Club celebrated its 100th year, which was effectively yesterday, 100 years ago, in which that Rotary Club was established in our community, commemorated that with a proclamation, as well as proclamations around Monarch Awareness Day, June 4th, Kids de Park Day, which will happen on June 22nd here, and Poppy Day, which comes around on June 28th. In the category of ribbon cuttings this month, the Sears Hometown Store, just off of Huntington Avenue, has been purchased, and new owners at that location, so they held a ribbon cutting last Friday. Tomorrow, Walmart's, I understand, going to hold a grocery pickup ribbon cutting to acknowledge the ordinance changes, as well as their service they're adding in that store. And then Wood County held an ATV Trail and Route System ribbon cutting in the last month. Want to remind folks to tune into my radio show tomorrow at 10:00 a.m. on WFHR to stream live via their website. Encourage community members to consider holding Carl Hillkey in their thoughts and prayers as he goes through some medical challenges at this time. But nonetheless, the radio show will continue tomorrow, and that concludes my report at this council meeting. Item number nine, consideration for adoption, the actions of the Planning Commission at its meeting on June 3rd. Get back to my W item here. There it was. Now it's gone. Sorry about that. I might need the paper copy if it doesn't pull up here. There we go. Planning Commission met at 4:00 p.m. on June 3rd in the first-floor conference room here at City Hall. Members present included Acting Chairperson Joe Zurfluh, Tom Bry, Shane Burkhart, Daniel Hanson, Sue Wesley, and Lee Tao. I was absent. Others in attendance are on file in the clerk's office. The meeting was called to order at 4:00 p.m. Item one was approval of the report from the April 1, 2019 Planning Commission. There was a motion and a second to approve the report, and that motion carried unanimously. Item two, maps and plaits received, there were no maps or plaits received. Item three was Plan 190350, Wood Trust Bank. The applicant is requesting site architectural plan and plan of operational review for a proposed new bank location. The subject property is located at 4811 8th Street South. Larry Hayes Wood Trust Bank provided an overview of the plans and request. There was a motion and a second to approve the request, subject to the following conditions. The exterior materials and design of the building shall be constructed in substantial conformance with the proposed exterior elevation plans provided by Godorzi. The landscaping plan prepared by Walasic Landscaping dated 4/24/19 shall be revised to add additional street frontage and parking lot landscaping. Landscaping shall be installed prior to issuance of an occupancy permit for the facility. Item three was lighting for the, lighting for the site shall be revised to reduce the amount of light trespass along the north and south property lines. And item four was compliance with all their applicable codes and ordinances, and that motion carried unanimously. Item four was a review and discussion on the update to the signed ordinance with Civitec. The commission reviewed and discussed the draft of Chapter 46, signs as presented by Civitec. Discussion focused around electronic message signs, sidewalk signs, height of signs, and overall size and location requirements for signs. Next steps will be to review or revise draft and determine the method and timing for public review of that draft. Five, number five was adjournment. There was a motion and a second to adjourn, and the motion carried unanimously, and the meeting adjourned at 4:52 p.m. With that, alderpersons, what are your wishes regarding number nine on our agenda?
Make a motion to accept.
Motion by Coth, is there a second? A second by Kellogg? Any discussion? Seeing no requests to speak, motion is to approve. Please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, six ayes, zero nays.
Item 10, our agenda this evening is consideration for adoption, the actions of the standing committees of the Common Council as follows. Item A is the Finance and Property Committee meeting held on June 4th. Alderperson Coth, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Your Honor. The Property and Finance Committee met at 5:00 p.m. on Tuesday, June 4th, 2019, in the first-floor conference room at City Hall. All committee members were present. List of others in attendance is on file with the clerk's office. First item of business was consider the approval of the 2019-2020 Class A liquor, Class A beer, Class B liquor, and Class B beer alcohol licenses. Consider non-renewal or denial for those licenses who are not qualified to hold a license because of delinquencies or other qualifications. It was moved by Blazer, seconded by Coth, to approve the 2019-2020 Class A liquor, Class A beer, Class B liquor, and Class B beer alcohol licenses. Motion carried. A list of businesses for which those are approved for is attached. There was also, that was a Class B beer, six months, which was approved in May, and a Class B beer and Class C wine. And there were reserved licenses on there as well. Item number three, consideration of taxi cab license renewal applications from Rapids Quick Cab LLC. Okay. There was another motion in the alcohol licenses. It was moved by Blazer, seconded by Coth, to direct the city clerk to give notice of the city's intent to deny alcohol licenses to Aberprym LLC and Bagave LLC for delinquent personal property taxes. That motion carried. It was moved by Blazer, seconded by Coth, to approve the license listed pending payment of applicable fees by June 18th, and that motion also carried. Good on that. Okay. Item three, consideration of taxi cab license renewal applications from Rapids Quick Cab LLC, All aboard Taxi LLC, and Got a Go Taxi. It was moved by Blazer, seconded by Coth, to approve the taxi cab license renewal applications for Rapids Quick Cab LLC, All aboard Taxi LLC, and Got a Go Taxi. Contingent on all obstacle licensing fees being paid, motion carried. Item number four was consider a special event application from Central Wisconsin BMX Club Incorporated for the Badger State three-day national event held July 26th through July 28th, using the Eastside Compost Site entrance and parking. Requesting the compost site be closed on Friday, July 26th, and Saturday, July 27th, 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., and Sunday, July 28th, from 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. It was moved by Blazer, seconded by Coth, to approve the special event application for the Central Wisconsin BMX Incorporated and the Badger State three-day national event held July 26th through July 28th, using the Eastside Compost Site for entrance and parking, and closing the rest of the Eastside Compost Site on Saturday, July 27th, 2019, from 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Motion carried. Item five was consider's request from Robert Rossetti of Metelco Incorporated on behalf of GM Paulo W. Rapids Realty LLC for the, for us, for use of a City Wisconsin Rapids owned lot with parcel number 34-09864 for storm water management. Purposes for the Metelco facility being constructed on the adjacent north lot to include a maintenance agreement. It was moved by Blazer, seconded by Coth, to approve use of a City of Wisconsin Rapids owned outlot with parcel ID 3409864 for storm water management purposes for the proposed Metelco facility being constructed on the adjacent lot to the north to include the proposed maintenance agreement. Motion carried. Item number six, consider approval of request to fund the facade improvement program in 2019 within the downtown waterfront district and to have the program administered by the Heart of Wisconsin. It was moved by Coth, seconded by Catnaught, to approve the request to fund the downtown waterfront district facade improvement program in 2019 in the amount of $23,250, and to have the program administered by the Heart of Wisconsin. Motion carried. Item seven was consider a recommendation from statewide services to deny a claim from Mike Zurfluh for damages to his property located at 1640 18th Avenue South. It was moved by Blazer, seconded by Catnaught, to deny the claim from Mike Zurfluh for damages to his property located at 1640 18th Avenue South, and the motion carried. Item number eight was consider a request from Johnny's LLC located at 2610 A Street South for a Class B beer and Class B liquor premises extension to include a portion of their parking lot for Thursday, July 18th, 2019, from 4:00 p.m. to 2:00 a.m., Friday, July 19th, from 4:00 p.m. to 2:00 a.m., and Saturday, July 20th, 2019, from 12:00 p.m. to 2:00 a.m. It was moved by Blazer, seconded by Coth, to approve the request from Johnny's LLC located at 2610 A Street South for a Class B beer and Class B liquor light premises extension to include a portion of their parking lot for Tuesday, Thursday, July 18th, 2019, from 4:00 p.m. to 2:00 a.m., Friday, July 19th, from 4:00 p.m. to 2:00 a.m., and Saturday, July 20th, from 12:00 p.m. to 2:00 a.m. Motion carried. Item number nine was to review and consider for approval the creation of Rapids Rediscovered New Housing Development Program. It was moved by Coth, seconded by Catnaught, to approve the creation of the Rapids Rediscovered New Housing Development Program. Motion carried. Item number 10 was review and consider rate proposals from truck vendors to purchase a one-ton pickup for the Parks Department. It was moved by Blazer, seconded by Catnaught, to approve the purchase of a Ford F-350 truck from V&amp;H Ford of Marshfield for the amount of $44,369.50. Motion carried. Item number 11 was an update on aquatics fundraising. Mayor Verwink updated the Finance and Property Committee on aquatics fundraising and the strategy options. Item number 12 was a request from Rick Bahova for additional funding for Regi, which is the Regional Economic Growth Initiative. It was moved by Catnaught, seconded by Coth, to approve funding for Regi in the amount of $20,716. Motion carried with Alderperson Blazer voting in the negative. Item number 13 was the audit of the bills. There was a motion by Coth, seconded by Catnaught, to audit the bills at the July meeting. Motion carried. Item number 14 was beverage operator licenses and license renewals. It was moved by Blazer, seconded by Catnaught, to approve the following beverage operator licenses and renewals, and a list of those renewals is attached, and the motion carried unanimously. Item number 15 was to set the next meeting date. The next regularly scheduled Finance Committee meeting will be held July 9th at 5:00 p.m. Item 16 was adjournment. It was moved by Coth, seconded by Blazer, to adjourn. Motion carried, and the meeting adjourned at 6:42 p.m. I'll wait and see if anyone wants anything held out of that before I call for a motion. Alderperson Blazer?
Item 12, please.
I would make a motion to approve the minutes of the Property and Finance Committee meeting, holding out item number 12.
A motion by Coth and a second by Catnaught. And we'll move into discussion just with the, to approve with the exception of item number 12, which is being held out. 12, which is being held out. You want to amend your motion, Alderperson Coth?
Yeah, I also want to hold out, is it the item number two?
Yeah, part of two, the two denials.
The two denials for item number two.
So the first of the, is that right? No, second of the three motions within item number two. So it was the two denials in item number two. So you want to amend your motion. Is there any objection to holding out item number two, that second part of number two? All right. So we've got that held out as well as item 12. That leaves the balance, go to discussion, Alderperson Rehm.
Not discussion, just one other item, if I may. And just, I'm in favor of it, but item four is the BMX would be closing the compost site, the site on that Saturday, the 27th. And I think somehow that if we could put up a sign there that that would be closed that Saturday is that, you know, people will be using that on the weekend. They're trying to take their grass clippings, whatever they may have to that, but that site will be closed. But I think that to remind people, the west side's open. That's mostly what I wanted to say, too, is the west side is open on Saturday, I think, till 5:00 PM. So just to remind people, we did, Steve did read it over, but just to mention it.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the balance of the report? Seeing no requests to speak, motions to approve with the exception of 12 and that portion of item two. Please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, six ayes, zero nays.
That leaves those two items. Do you want to take them in order? Sure. I entertain a motion on the first, well, do you want to clarify? Do you want to clarify, Jennifer, on that? That second part of item two?
Right, those two businesses have paid their delinquent personal property taxes, so we would request a motion to approve the Class A liquor and Class A beer licenses for those two businesses.
Well, the clerk just get her item.
I can make the motion if you guys want.
All right.
Since the delinquent property taxes were brought current, I will make a motion to approve the beer and liquor licenses to Aberpym LLC and Bagave LLC.
Motion by Coth and a second by Blazer. Any further discussion on that item? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. Motions to approve.
Motion carried, six ayes, zero nays.
Leaves item number 12. Alderpersons, what are your wishes regarding, were you holding out four? That was a comment on four. Yeah, okay. Thanks. That leaves item number 12. Alderpersons, what are your wishes regarding that? Alderperson Blazer, you're first.
I guess I held this out. As I stated last year, I wasn't in favor of approving funding at the full current level, that we needed to start a step-down process in being that the motions to fund it for the same amount as last year. I'm just holding out so I can deny it.
Are there any other requests to speak? Alderperson Catnaugh, you're next.
Thank you. I went back and forth on this one. I'm really torn on if we should continue this relationship with Regi. Reasons I stated in the Finance Committee, I feel like it is somewhat of a duplication of efforts of other funding sources we're placing. I would also like to see some type of step-down process or some type of plan going forward to change our relationship or bring some more of this in-house to save on some of the costs. So I'm also going to be voting against this.
Alderperson Coth, you're next.
I just saw Rick wave his hand, so I wanted to yield time if he wanted to address the council.
Rick, did you care to yield, or just, yeah, if you could come to the podium to make sure we can catch you on the recording?
I can yield time, too, if need be.
Rick, if you could hit the button on the bottom of the microphone.
Got it. There we go. Rick Pacoca, I live at 674 13th Avenue in the City of Nacusa. The Regi Board met last week and has gone over future plans for Regi. And we had County Board, Seed Committee meetings today as well. And it's going to be Regi's proposal in the future, that we adopt a more project-based proposal instead of the grant-based that's here. We already have some things in play for this year we think are very beneficial to the city of Wisconsin Rapids. I did email each of you an updated letter on those ongoing things. We'd like to continue those through the end of this year, and with your funding approval, we can do that. I think they're very beneficial to Rapids, including the opportunity zone fund perspectives that we are working on here on in afterwards, and to Mr. Blazer's comments. Shane, we're going to adopt a project base so that the project, enough of the grant funding, we've established a credibility to be able to perform as an entity that's advantageous to economic development. And we'd like to submit projects along with our city or private partners for individual funding payable on completion of those projects after this year. We do have some obligations in 2019 we'd like to continue, so we ask that you continue this at some rate for the rest of this year. And thank you.
Are there any further requests to speak? Seeing no requests to speak, the motion is, the floor is open if there's a desire to make a motion. And if there are no requests to speak...
I'll make the motion to send it to a vote.
Motion to approve by Kubashak, is there a second? Second by Coth. Any further requests to speak? Alderperson Rehm, you're next.
Thank you, Your Honor. Yeah, I'm just going to chime in, I guess, before we do vote to let people know. I'm going to vote to oppose this. I, you know, it's not necessarily, as we look at other things, a tremendously huge chunk of money, but I just think now's the time, I think it's the right thing to do, to discontinue the involvement with that. So I'm going to be voting against it also.
Are there any further requests to speak? Seeing none, move into a vote. Motions to approve, please cast your ballots.
Motion failed. Zero ayes, six nays.
Thank you. We'll move on to item B under item 10, which is the Finance and Property Committee meeting held on June 18th. Alderperson Coth, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Your Honor. The report of the Property and Finance Committee meeting held on June 18, 2019. Alderperson Coth and Blazer were present. Alderperson Catnaugh was excused. List of others on file, is on file with the clerk's office. Meeting was called to order at 5:00 PM. Item number two was consider a change order request for Jockey General Contractors to excavate behind the river wall in the Mead Rapids View Park to recompact soils and install fabric to reduce and eliminate soil loss to the river wall. It was moved by Coth, seconded by Blazer, to approve the change order by Jockey General Contractors to excavate behind the river wall in Mead Rapids View Park and reinstall fabric and recompact the soils for up to $50,000. Motion failed, 1-1. Item number three was review the proposed plans and specifications for the Third Avenue project between Johnson Street and Goggins Street and consider letting the project for bid. It was moved by Coth, seconded by Blazer, to let the Third Avenue project between Johnson Street and Goggins Street for bid as planned contingent upon grant financing. Motion carried, 2-0. Item number four was consider a change order request to reinstate repair stone masonry item back into the East Riverbank Phase II project. It was moved by Coth, seconded by Blazer, to reinstate the, reinstate repair stone masonry back into the East Riverbank Phase II project for $31,500. Motion carried, 2-0. Item number five was adjournment. It was moved by Blazer, seconded by Coth, to adjourn. Motion carried. The meeting adjourned at 5:45 PM. With that, I would move for adoption of the minutes.
Motion to approve by Coth, is there a second? Second by Kellogg. Are there any requests to speak? Alderperson Blazer?
I'd like to hold out item number two.
I'd amend the motion.
Any opposition to withholding item two? I don't think there would be. All right. Thank you. That leaves the balance of the report, three and four. Alderperson Rehm, you're first.
I'd like to hold out three, if I could.
So that leaves item, any opposition to holding out three, I should ask? Seeing none, so that leaves item four. Alderperson Kubashak, you're next.
Yeah, I just, as far as item number four is, I guess it's going to be on its own unless we hold out call to order or adjournment. So it just is, I've been kind of away for a little bit. What is a real quick, two-second, I guess, explanation for that? And maybe Mr. Coth or Mr. Mayor, if you could address that. Thank you.
Essentially, the scope, as I recall, the discussion was pertaining to the former snow dump site, that when the scope was revised to meet the budget as of this last spring's bidletting, the staff had an oversight and did not include the river wall cap that was being replaced in the, where we used to dump snow into the river. And I don't know if Joe or if the chairman has anything further.
Sure. So that particular area was a staff oversight, and the recommendation, you know, it was included in the wall maintenance portion of the project that was held out. That section of wall by the old snow dump site needs to be rebuilt, just, you know, a couple feet above the ground, and then the new cap installed. That reconstruction needs to take place in order for the cap to be installed. So it's something that we shouldn't have pulled out of the project. And in, you know, as we're executing the project, we discovered it was pulled out, and we're asking for it to be put back in.
Thank you. Any further requests to speak? Seeing none, motions to approve items one, four, and five. Please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, five ayes, one nay.
That leaves items two and three. Alderpersons, what are your wishes regarding either of those two?
I'll take them individually. I'll make a motion to approve item number two.
Motion to approve item number two, is there a second? Second by Catnaugh. Move into discussion. Are there any requests to speak? Alderperson Blazer?
I guess I'll just reiterate a little bit what I had spoke about at Finance when I voted against it. As I've been stated, as I've previously stated since, since, I don't know, sometime last year, that the maintenance of the wall has been my priority in making sure that was in order. This item, I think most people are aware that we've had issues with sinkholes over by the Glock Tower, that this should have been addressed and included in the original bidletting, and ultimately, when it was, the project cost was brought before us, it should have been included at that point. So I feel that this $50,000 needs to come from the existing approved budgeted amount and not from the contingency, being that we've just approved spending $31,500 from that contingency, adding this additional up to $50,000. Out of that contingency is going to put, I can't remember the final number of that contingency, but close to half of our contingency will be taken up. And my concern is that when the next, as next, as potential other costs come before us, we will end up having to, I'm just speculating and guessing, exceed our contingency allowed amount. So I'm voting against it, and thank you.
Are there other requests to speak? Otherwise, certainly the floor.
So this particular item is a repair that really isn't suitable to perform after the park project's complete, because it's on the land side of the river wall. And so where the rest of the maintenance that we had talked about before, the tuck pointing, the riverside maintenance work, that can be done at a later date without impact to the park and the projects that are taking place now. This change order was prepared with the assistance of our general contractor, who has a unique expertise in repair and maintenance of water-type structures. The voids that exist behind the wall are minor, but they are there. And they propose two different solutions. This one not only is the least expensive solution, it's also their recommended solution that would be most effective. You know, while it does impact the contingency of the project, I would suggest that had we known that this was the appropriate, or this was a suitable means to make this repair, that we would have included it in the project. And that really is the purpose of a change order. And I'm certainly, certainly aware of the concerns of using up our contingencies, but this is a really important item, and I believe that it needs to be included in the project at this point. We really, we really can't wait to do this work. Thank you.
Further requests to speak? Any other discussion? Seeing none, we've got a motion, a second on the floor. Motion's to approve item two as it's been presented. I believe, Coth, can you re, or maybe the clerk can reread the motion. My understanding of the motion was to approve as it was presented, but not with the recommendation.
Okay. To approve the change order. Okay. All right.
Yeah, thank you. So the motion is to approve the change order as it was presented to the Finance Committee this evening. Any opposition to the folks that made a motion a second to that effect, that that was the understanding? Okay. So we can get the record straight. Motion's out there. If there's no further discussion, please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, four ayes, two nays.
Thank you. Item 10B, item three. Alderpersons, what are your wishes regarding that particular item?
Your Honor?
Yeah.
Okay. I held this out, and I am going to vote no on it. It's the Third Avenue project, it's the half circle there that goes around in front of the senior center. Couple months ago, when the council did approve to go ahead and have this studied, to come up with the plans, and all this, the work and everything has to take place by the end of this year. So obviously, there's a rush into, and there's a lot that can be talked about, I guess, with what's possibly involved, if it does happen, another place for the farmer's market, other things, some more on-street parking that would be added and that. But what we did a couple months ago, when the approval was given, is that there was no cost to the city was going to be acquired, and that donations were going to have to come in, that we're going to pay for this to go. That has not happened to this time. There is thought that it may come. And the motion is to go ahead, contingent upon the finance... And the, the motion is to, to go ahead contingent upon the financing. The bids are there to go out, they have to go out quick. So it is, it is the bottom line. Couple of months ago was darned close to it, but this is what there was two months ago. And we aren't there. So in reality, one thing is, is that maybe we should have just waited till next week to have a meeting, a special meeting on this, and then we would know maybe if we had the money or not. There is thoughts, I, I do believe, if I understood at the meeting here before this one, is that if enough money doesn't come in, we'll scale back the project. Well, that isn't what was looked at, we looked at doing, that so much would be done. So in a sense, we're saying, we did say that we wouldn't do unless we got all this money to do it. But now, if we don't get all that money that we need to do it all, we're going to reduce what we're going to do, that we still could do that. I just think the time, the time is coming that we, that our decision was based upon that a couple of months ago and that I'm just, I'm going to vote no for those reasons, is that the money hasn't, hasn't come, hasn't come through to proceed with the project. So basically, I think that's all I have to say right now, Your Honor.
Thank you. Alder Person Coth, you're next.
Without knowing which way the votes would go for this, and I don't want to see this project get killed because I think it's a good project, but I think if there's some concerns that other council members have, I think maybe the best way to go about this would be to call for a special council meeting once some of the unknown variables are, are known, and then approve it at that time. So I would make a motion to request a special council meeting to have this item looked at.
So would that be a motion to postpone this item for a special council meeting?
Yes.
Okay. And we've got a motion by Coth and a second by Katna. And we'll move into continued discussion. Alder Person Kubashak, did you have anything to discuss?
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor. I was going to reiterate exactly what Mr. Reom said, and now that we've got a motion on the floor to postpone this, I think that's the proper way to do it. I think that with a lot of the projects that we've been involved with lately, we've kind of had the cart in front of the horse. And I don't want that to become the rule that we're going to operate by moving forward. So I think that it's absolutely appropriate to postpone this until a special council meeting. I don't have a problem with that at all. And, but the question is, is when are we going to know a little bit more about it? You know, because if we postpone it, we're technically, in terms of Robert's Real Suborder, we need to postpone it to a specific date rather because a special council meeting is, is more of an arbitrary suggestion with that. So, and time is of the essence depending upon it. So is there any suggestions for in two weeks, during the, the evening of the next committee meetings?
With all, my understanding is some of the unknown variables might be known as soon as tomorrow. So if it's at all possible, I think if we could put together a special council meeting next week, since this is time-sensitive, would be the best way to go.
So in that case, do you want to revise your motion to hold the item over for a time in which we can assess when those unknowns around financing, it sounds like that's the controlling item, I would suspect, of the, of the council's feelings, right? Is that a fair read, that as soon as we know the financial commitments to the project, we would be ready perhaps for a discussion at that time? Is that, we're at least reading the conversation? So at least holding it over instead of postponing it for a particular date that we may not know at this moment, right, to the, to the point of, point of order really around the postponement? So would you consider amending your motion to hold that item for, over for a special council meeting to be determined?
Yes.
Okay.
And, Your Honor, just so that, further, Mr. Reom, does that, does that kind of satisfy your concern a little bit? Or is there something else that, further with that?
That doesn't, but like I even said at the, at the meeting, you know, concern, I have concerns about, you know, I shouldn't say issues came up. I talked to a couple of people after our vote here a couple of months ago at the Senior Center and that, you know, they do, there are concerns expressed about losing that space in the front, that circle, the grass space and that. There are some, you know, really nice trees that have finally started to grow that out front there and whatnot, to straighten the road out. Probably, yes, you know, a lot of people, it would have been good if we hadn't, hadn't did what we did a long time ago with the street, but that happened, so it's there. You know, so I have other concerns than that, but that, that was the biggest thing, is that we were going to have the money before we, before we went ahead. And I, you know, if it's going to happen, you know, I guess it's, I, I don't want, I wouldn't want to say yes and then that we don't have enough money, but then come back, well, we're going to scale back on what we said we're going to do because we do have this much to do, but we, you know, instead of the whole million and a half or what exactly the project is, that isn't, you know, necessarily what we're waiting to get in. But, you know, if we come up with that we're $300,000 short, we're going to have to cut out or do something different, would that be in the best interest of doing something like that versus this whole thing? So the, the money's an issue, but I have concerns about actually, actually changing, changing what's there. So that, you know, there are concern, there's parking, there's parking issues with, within that handicap spot, which aren't necessarily legal, that are out front there, half a dozen spots, whatever, 10 spots. In one spot, we've lost entryway to the back of the, of the Senior Center and that. So I, you know, there are things, I think, that going forward, as we did, again, as you stated, maybe sometimes of getting the cart for the horse, is that maybe the whole, all of what was looked at to take away wasn't, that what is being taken away or has been already, wasn't all looked at. You know, so I, I think there's, the money's the biggest issue, but I, you know, there's other things, I think, to look at, really what we're doing there. So.
And then not to step in, Mr. Mayor, but I, those would be what we would be discussing at the special council meeting. So it, it, as far as the ordinance goes, the council president can schedule a special council meeting, but what I'll do is I'll defer it to your office, Mr. Mayor, to, to find a date because of just the fact that you're on duty every day and you are privy to as much information as anybody. So if that makes sense, then, did you second that? Okay. Then motion, of course.
And I would just offer that perhaps we could look at, I know the most, actually, all the committees have moved to the week after the fourth, that perhaps we could use the evening of the second for a special meeting. And perhaps, is Public Works still, okay, sorry, the finance and property and HR is the 10th? 8th? Okay. All right. So perhaps we could set something around the, the evening of the second, yeah, I don't want to impede around Public Works. I think it would be also beneficial to perhaps meet at the Braim Conference Room, so we all can walk, I don't know how much time folks have been able to get and check the site out, but I would suggest that we, if there's a special council meeting, when it is, we should have it at the Centralia Center, so that way the discussion can be right there. And perhaps there's a walking visit a part of that.
You know, I totally agree with that, and I, because so everybody can see it firsthand. Mayor, you had sent out an email this, you know, I-
This this morning, yeah.
Yeah, okay. I looked at it this afternoon, I think it was, and maybe all the, all the, the Alderman hadn't, and that's where some of this other information, and I don't have it on the screen to say exactly what was in there, but that, to meet there, to actually look at what is to be done, or what has been done, you know, and that, I think would be very beneficial for, for all of us.
I agree.
Including myself. And I, I've driven around there and it is just, every time I drive around, it's amazing. So, thank you.
I've said it to the folks at the Centralia Center, by no means do I want to be known as the mayor that screwed up the parking situation around the Centralia Center. So I think it's, it's, it moves all of us to get that right. And I also suggest, the only controlling item is schedule with the construction if this were to move forward. The one piece, because we're serving probably six different masters with this project, between the state, the various funders, the designers, and then the users of the Centralia Center, I don't believe that that'll screw up the, the train of time. It's just a matter of us being able to communicate to the state that this remains an active project, that the city still remains interested in pursuing this until a point at which it may or may not happen. So, and for those that were not at, that were not able to be at the Finance Committee tonight, the state had informed us last Thursday of a deadline, the 21st, which was Friday this week, to have financing commitments in order, of which we responded to say that was quite ridiculous because of the amount of board meetings between our city council, various funders' boards and such. So anyway, I throw that all out there for the benefit, food for thought, that this remains a very dicey project at times, just in terms of the various components that we have to satisfy. Joe, you had wanted to say something, is there's anything you wanted to add? Or Adam, I guess Adam's the one that's been our liaison with the state.
Sure. I guess the only thing I was interested in adding, and it, and it may be moot if the, if the, if the interest in visiting the site and doing that onsite assessment is critical, then this isn't a suggestion. But otherwise, if, you know, the, the motion was to move forward with the project as designed and only if the funding was available. And if that were the case, then there is no question about parsing it back without council review. That would only be if the project is funded and led as designed. And again, that's just in the spirit of keeping it moving. If the concern, though, you know, revolves also around the parking issues and if there are other questions, obviously, there may be benefit of waiting. But this is a project that if we are to move forward with it, really, I mean, time is a, is a significant issue and, you know, if there are things that the council is comfortable with in order to move it forward, and, and we can list those as contingencies or whatever, I would suggest it might be a good idea, but it's just a suggestion.
I think the biggest risk, Joe, you, you speak about that isn't said, is the fact that we want to make sure we've got contractors that are able and willing to do this project around the engineer's estimates, right? That if we push into a July, late July timeframe, we're just not going to find folks that are able to do it, thereby jeopardizing the grant. So, yeah, I think it's just, and perhaps it'd be beneficial for us to outline again all of these components, because there's been a, over the course of about four months, components of discussion and, yeah. And if everyone's receptive to a special meeting, by all means, we'll have it. And I'm thinking that's probably the best route to go anyway, so we can focus on just this particular, there's a lot of aspects to it. So I would agree with, with the discussion that's been had for the benefit of, for, of all. Any further requests to speak? So the motion, as I understand, is to hold this item over for a, to be determined special council meeting. Is that everyone else's understanding? Okay. With that said, there's a motion, a second on the floor. Please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, six ayes, zero nays.
Item 10C, the Public Works Committee meeting held on June 4th. Alder Person Kubashak, floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Public Works Committee met at 6:00 PM, actually, it was 6:47 PM, in the council chambers in City Hall. No, it was in the first-floor conference room. Thaddeus Kubashak, Tom Reom, and Lee Graff were present, present. Others attending are listed below. Item number one, call to order. The meeting was called to order at 6:47 PM after the Finance and Property Committee meeting. Item number two, review Director of Public Works report. The Director of Public Works report was reviewed. Item number three, review and consider amending recently adopted changes to ordinance Chapter 7 Solid Waste Collection to reinstate garbage services for mobile home parks and residential units located within the commercial build and residential units located within commercial buildings. Motion by Kubashak, second by Graff, to amend Chapter 7 by striking the following language. The ordinance began with Section 7.05 condominiums, mobile home parks, residences, above businesses, and the language that is being rescinded is the city will not provide collectible recycling service or garbage service to residential properties physically located above commercial properties, to mobile home parks, or to condominiums. Motion passed two to one with Reom voting no. Item number four, review residential street lighting LED bulb installations. Electrical engineer supervisor Todd Wyler presented an update on street lighting. There are over 3,000 street lights in the city. The engineering department decides where the street light should be and the utility installs and maintains them. LED installations have been occurring for years and the technology has changed during that time. At this time, lights installed along low-volume residential streets are 2,700 Kelvin color, whereas lights installed along connecting highways, arterials, and higher-volume streets are 4,000 Kelvin color. Item number five, review and consider storm sewer improvements on 21st Place. Concerns were raised, excuse me, concerns were raised by residents about high groundwater levels in the neighborhood. The water utility has checked the water main for leaks and have found none. Storm sewer utility has checked the storm sewer system and it is unobstructed and working properly. The engineering department will review options for monitoring and report back to the committee. Item number six, review and consider designation of a four-way stop at the intersections of A, Two Mile Avenue and 16th Street, B, Chase Street and 25th Avenue, C, Chase Street and 21st Avenue. Traffic in these areas was discussed and will be evaluated in accordance with the city's ordinance and policies. Item number seven, review and, review snow and ice control policy. The policy was reviewed. Item eight, referral, or I'm sorry, review referral list. Items 14, 17, and 18 have been removed from the list. Item number nine, adjournment, motion by Reom, second by Graff, to adjourn. Motion passed three to zero. Meeting adjourned at 9:04 PM. And with that, I make the motion for approval.
The motion to approve by Kubashak and a second by Coth, move into discussion. Alder Person Reom, you're first.
I would just like to hold out item three.
Is there any objection to holding out item three? There are no objections. We'll leave item three to the side for a moment. Are there any other requests to speak? Motion is to approve with the exception of item number three. Please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, six ayes, zero nays.
Who leaves item number three? Alder Persons, what are your wishes regarding that?
I'll make a motion to approve. Item number three has presented in the report.
We have a motion to approve item number three by Coth as presented. Is there a second? Second by Kubashak. Move into discussion. Are there any requests to speak?
Your Honor?
Alder Person Reom, you're first.
Yeah. This has been a project, Your Honor, that's gone on for, a discussion that's gone on for a long time, changing or converting to an automated garbage collection system. If I may, what I'd like to do is recognize Public Works Director Joe Terry to, I think he has some handouts possibly for us if we, if need be, but also you could maybe give a little background of where we are on that and why, I guess from my point of view of why I want to hold it out. Joe? I'd recognize Joe when we get this. Oops. Okay, two.
Over the last several meetings, there's been a few questions and, you know, both comments brought up by residents in the city and some questions by Alder Persons. The first sheet is an excerpt of a memo that I had addressed to the Public Works Committee. Just a couple of highlights-
Just a couple of highlights from that. One of the goals of the work that we've done in developing the ordinance that exists now was to reduce costs associated with garbage collection and reallocate some of that labor to streets maintenance activities. And in doing so, make sure that our services are consistent with the level of service that are in other municipalities our size. The proposed changes does significantly negate many of these goals. The current ordinance has resulted in developing collection routes, informing the public about the program. Many of our residents already have received letters, purchasing of trucks, purchasing of carts, developing a four-day collection route schedule that allows our operators, our recycling and refuse operators, to assist with other high-priority public works maintenance activities on that fifth day. Adding stops to the routes will result in additional costs, administrative efforts, at this point, public confusion, and less ability to perform other critical maintenance activities. As proposed, the change, the motion on the floor, would add 554 additional stops and would require the need to return to a five-day-a-week route. We'd need to regenerate route maps and reinform the public, which we're in the process of doing right now. And if we're informing the public of how we're going to do something, and, you know, in a few days we have to do it again, it's going to lead to some significant confusion. We'd have to deliver an extra 1,308 carts. 550 of those would be garbage carts that would need to be purchased at a cost of $30,250. The annual garbage and recycling tipping fees would be an additional about $29,900. And again, those funds would be reallocated and most likely from some type of street maintenance activity, but also result in about an 8% increase in truck operating costs. The commercial properties within the city include the mobile home parks. The residents are residents, just like residents of any apartment complex, but the property itself is a commercial property. And every one of those commercial properties right now in the city is required to have and provide garbage and recycling services to their tenants. So, that service exists today. It's just a matter of whether the general taxpayers are paying for it or whether the commercial entity that is making money in these parks is paying for it. There was a question, and Alderperson Kellogg had asked staff to dive in a little bit to help clarify specifically to the mobile home parks, the taxes that are paid by those mobile home parks and what it's for. The park owner pays real property tax, and that is what funds most of the services within the city. The other fees that are collected are personal property taxes. And again, that is, you know, those are collected, the service that's provided by the city to the property owner. You know, if we were to provide garbage collection, the service is to the property owner, not to the tenants. If tenants have questions about levels of service in a multifamily residential, in a mobile home park, their question should be addressed to the business owner, the property owner. The two documents, the two following documents are letters that the city's received from the Department of Revenue and a corresponding tax bulletin that helps explain some of that a little bit. So, with that, I would recommend that we move forward with the ordinance that we have currently in place, and if there's a need to change it, that we look at it after a reasonable period of time, maybe that's a year, let the, let the program run. Like I said, we've come a long way down a path, and to change it just literally a week or two before we're going to implement a program that we've been advertising and notifying the public about would be a real challenge. Thank you.
Alderperson Rayom, did you have anything further? While time is, while you've got the floor. Okay, we'll move through the speaking order then. Alderperson Kubashak, you're next.
I guess, I don't know if there is anybody, but if there is anybody in the audience that wants to speak about this, I'll yield my time toward that then.
I will move from my right to the left. Ma'am, if you could come to the podium and introduce yourself, and as the instructions earlier, state your name, your address, and make sure the microphone is on. Thank you.
My name is Linda Wire. I live at 531 Griffith Avenue in Crimson Leaf Mobile Home Park. I have just heard you compare us to apartment complexes, which are commercial property. However, we rent our lots, but we own our homes, we own our properties. We pay, you say, personal property taxes? I don't understand that. Are we only paying for our personal property inside of our houses? Is that what you're saying? We pay taxes in our lot rent, which are collected by our, by the owner of the park and distributed then to the tax department. We qualify at five for lottery tax credits every year. The tax assessor comes around and reassesses our homes. I don't understand how that makes us any different than any other homeowner in the city. I understand that apartment complexes are owned by a business, and the people there in rent and are stacked upon each other. I understand why they are commercial property. Our owner pays taxes. So do we. I don't understand where that, where the difference lies, or just because, do you have a fee department here in this building? Is there a fee collection department anywhere in the city? There's not. We pay taxes, just like everybody else. If we are paying personal property taxes, for what services are we paying them for? We get no garbage collection, no recycle collection. The police aren't even on our street, though we've called several times, to have them watch the speeding people that roar past our house every day. We don't get police service, we don't get trash pickup. What are we getting for our taxes? And if we stop paying them, I guarantee you the tax department is going to come down on us. We are tax-paying citizens. And you might have forgotten part of this, but for liberty and justice for all, not just for people who buy a home for over $100,000.
Thank you. Alderperson Kubashak, did you have anything further? Alderperson Blazer, you're next. Or do we want to move through, do you want to yield time? How do we want to?
Yeah, I can re, if anybody else wants, I can yield my time also.
Sir, did you want to come to the podium?
Hello, my name is Franklin Salerka. I'm living in 4610 East Street South, trailer 67. And I'm just wondering, we have a resident on the corner of, on Lincoln and Main and Manor that gets their pickup. They get their garbage and their recycling pickup. And why can't they just come around to, around our unit and pick up our, pick up our garbage and recycling? We have, in our trailer park, we have people that are 89, 90 years old. We have disabled people that hardly can even put their garbage out to the corner or to the curb. And now they expect them to carry, carry the garbage to the, to the, into the bins. And it's just impossible. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderperson Blazer. Did you have anything more to add? Okay. Alderperson Kellogg, you're next.
I watched the hearing that you had, and I'm empathetic with your concerns that you just expressed. But this Chapter 7 solid waste collection, what I liked about it is delineates between commercial and non-commercial. And I can't help from saying, I mean, you saw the articles here. It states that the person at home owns the mobile home, it's a business, and they collect fees from the people that are on that property. And they're responsible to take, take care of the needs of those people that have challenges. And we have five mobile parks in the city, and there's, there are people in all those parks that have unique circumstances, and I do appreciate that, being a senior citizen myself. But that's the prob, that's the concern of the owner of that property and not the city. The other concern, I drove through your park right after the first hearing, because I just wanted to get a feel for, you have a beautiful park. And when I went through it, I think I saw a groundskeeper with a cart and so forth and picking it up. And so, I have to compliment you. But the other concern I have is I can't see why we have city trucks. This is just being liable, the liability of city trucks going on private property through a kind of condensed area. And one could say, well, you could get permission from the owner of the park, but when it, when a child gets hurt and you go to court, it's a whole different ballgame. And we don't want that to happen. I don't want that to happen, and I'm sure others don't. So, I, I'm saying, I look at that as a business. The other concern that, in this statement here, talks about commercial businesses with property above. That's a commercial business as well. If the commercial business has to have garbage and recycling pick, containers that they have to provide, well, the people that live above can put their garbage and recycling in those containers. However, if the, we provide the garbage and recycling to the businesses up above, that means the business, I mean, to the apartments up above, that means the business could put their garbage in that bin and another bin for recycling, and then they don't have to have that provided. They don't have to pay for it. The city would pick it up. Well, my problem is, is that I want to treat all the businesses the same. I've had calls from some businesses where they say, "We have one bag of garbage. That's all we have. Why can't you pick it up?" Well, another business says, "We have five, I just bought a professional building, and there's five places in that professional building, and I have only one bay. Why can't you pick?" So, what happens when you start to treat commercial businesses and cherry pick this one business and this? It unravels it all. So, I look at this as a plan where it separates the business and non-business, and it's clean that way. The other thing with the condominiums, and we have families, we have a 24, a building with 24 units, they had, they provide their own dumpster. They can divide it among the 25, and they provide it. So, I think it's clean. And when you start to unravel this, I'm going to, I'm going to say no, or vote negative on this, because I think it should be reinstated in the plan so that, as I explained, and I hope I explained it well enough, so you can understand where I'm coming from.
Are there further requests to speak? Alderperson Coth, you're next.
Alder, just yield time to one of the people out there.
One of the people, ma'am, do you want to come up in the front there? Yeah, in the red shirt.
Yes, I'm Bonnie Blanc. You said you're worried about the garbage people coming into the thing. Well, our landlord, there's 30 trailers in our court, he got the smallest one, it's filled in three days, and this garbage man still come up because he's paying for it, $36 a dump. But they only, he only allows us one. So, it's still, still the same truck coming in.
Are there further requests to speak? Oh, ma'am, can you just tell us your address one more time for the record? Sorry, I didn't catch that when you came up.
Crimson Leaf Mobile Home, 531 Griffith Avenue. I have Lot L.
Thank you. Other requests to speak? Alderpersons, anyone wishing to yield more time? Alderpersons, we've got a motion, a second on the floor, or anyone else wishing to yield time or speak, request to speak? Alderperson Rayom?
Thank you, Your Honor. Obviously, I think we're getting to the point here to vote, or close to anyway, but, so I'm going to, again, just say I'm going to vote no. It's, this has been an ongoing discussion that we've had for probably a year, or close to it anyway, and the decision being made and of the intent to order to go to the automated system, the four-day week, and all that was with this, with this in mind to do. And that's, so the motion is to, so it's clear, is to approve what was stricken here. I'm voting no on that, so that would be that, that, the wording stays in, that it's not taken out, just so everybody's clear. It is late in the game. There is an added, added cost as the memos from Joe has stated. Added cost with new containers that would have to be bought, tipping fees that would be ongoing. The total schedule would have to be redone. There's five, close to 600 added pickups that would, that would have to take place. And so, Your Honor, with that, I, I'm just, and I just wanted to say that I was going to make sure everybody knew where I was voting, I think they did, but also that to leave the wording in would be, requires a no vote. So, that's all.
Any further requests to speak? Alderperson Kubashak?
Just for clarification, can you repeat back the motion, Your Honor? Or not necessarily repeat back the motion, but kind of like what Mr. Rayom was talking about, so that everybody's absolutely clear which way they're voting?
So, the motion was, motion and second were to approve the recommendation of the Public Works Committee to the council, so in effect, striking the language that was previously identified in the minutes. Are there further requests to speak? From the body up here? The rules of the council are that individuals of the body must acknowledge people from the audience, so that's why I'm, I understand, I'm hearing folks, but I'm not hearing folks up here that are deciding to yield time, so. See no further requests to speak. The motion is to approve. Please cast your ballots.
So, I'm not allowed to speak? I can't imagine that I should be discriminated against.
Sir, I'm going to ask you to, I actually have a tie-break vote, and I'm going to ask you to take a seat, because the rules of the council are for members of the, or members of the council to acknowledge members from the audience to speak. So, in this case, I'm going to ask you to take a seat, and we're not discriminating or preventing you from using your free speech, but those are the rules of the body at this time. So, the, go ahead, you can read the vote.
You're real voting.
You need to break the vote, break the tie.
Yeah, so the motion is tied. Now, we are missing two members of the body this evening, in which I will opt to allow the council this in effect. the council, this in effect was potentially the first reading from the body, or of the body. Ordinances do require, ordinance changes such as this do require a second reading if it's not unanimous. Is that correct, Attorney Schill? So in this case, I will vote in the negative until which time the council can hear this issue a second time for a second reading. Is that clear to the members of the council? It's not. Right, if it's not a unanimous ordinance change, it would have had to come back to the body, yeah. Yeah, because ordinance changes need a second reading if they're not unanimous. All right, so the motion failed, three ayes, four nays, and... So this item will have to come back at the July Common Council meeting as it was a ordinance revision. Is that correct, Attorney Schill?
That is correct. Each ordinance requires two readings. The only time that it could possibly pass at the first meeting is if it's unanimous, so it doesn't even matter whether there was no votes in favor at this meeting. It requires two readings.
And Alderperson Rehm, you had a point of order?
Yeah, just a question.
Clarification, okay.
Trying to run it through my mind quick, and not computing right away, so that's why I'm asking the question. Didn't we, is this the first reading of this, or did we, or was this read and now that the change is attempted to be made?
Well, it's my understanding that this is the first time that this specific, I mean, the original ordinance amendment did not contain this language, did it? I mean, it was, I mean, the original language did contain this restriction on covering, on garbage collection to these. So, right, we have not been provided with an ordinance previously that took out collect mobile homes and residents above businesses and condos. That's my understanding, so this would really be the first.
But, okay. So any, any change to an existing ordinance, though? If it was not unanimous, would have to have a second reading?
Other than traffic and parking ordinances, yes. It actually used to be that all ordinances required two readings, no matter what, and then at some point, someone, I don't know how long ago it was, said that, "Well, what if everyone is unanimous on that first vote, can't we pass it then?" And then so you changed the ordinance to provide for that, so, yeah, that's...
I'm not disputing that, I just, I guess it's, maybe it's right, I'm not, but it just seems strange that an ordinance that's there, if that's the case, that if a change is proposed to change it, that that would take a unanimous vote or two votes.
I hear what you're saying. So you're stating, I think I understand where you're coming from, that the direction or the sentiment of the committee was recommended to the body. Generally, the practice is to prepare an ordinance after the sentiment of the committee is reflected, or the council, I should say, and then the ordinance gets brought to the council. Is that what you're saying? So you're saying that this technically could be interpreted that it was not the first reading? Is that what I'm understanding?
I guess that's where I'm coming from, but it's a question, is this, is this the first reading? If not?
Well, so you're saying this was more of an idea to, I mean, I guess, I think it's true that it's not in your ordinance form, but it does specifically state, this is the section it struck through. I would take this as, the alternative is, if the Public Works Committee said, "This is what we want you to do," well, then the next meeting would be the first reading, and then the second reading would be in August, and so we're just putting it off for one further month, if this was the direction of Public Works.
But Tom's saying, in this setting, the motion failed because I voted in the negative, so therefore the issue is dead. It's sort of your interpretation of the course of events.
That's my thoughts.
But on the flip side, if it's the first reading, the first reading failed, the second reading comes back to the council anyway at the next meeting. So I guess I will ask Attorney Schill, just for sake of the purpose of the meeting today, to interpret our rules and to what extent there is any sort of indication on this and provide the council with a memo. We know the two courses of action, I guess, as it potentially may go in this setting. So thank everyone for their discussion on that particular item. If I'm not mistaken, we move on to item 10D.
Excuse me.
Yes.
I pushed it to speak, but it couldn't.
Oh, I'm sorry.
If it's a tie next month, what happens then? The language stays in the ordinance, right?
Well, it would depend what the mayor, how the mayor would vote. I guess if this same thing happened next month, then it would be defeated.
Whatever, yeah, okay.
Because he cast a vote to not have it approved.
I was just curious, sorry, thanks.
And again, not necessarily my opinions on the ordinance, having two members that are absent this evening that probably care about this particular item, and so I think it's the most, nonetheless, if it was not, it's not unanimous anyway, so it wouldn't stand anyway tonight, it'd come back next month anyway. So really, my vote's irrelevant. Yes, sir?
Can I please ask, okay, if there's a two-story home, say, for instance, and it was in the city, and the people living downstairs are there, and they decide, okay, they're going to rent out a room or upstairs apartment to it, will they still have their garbage picked up? It will be a business because they got to report that money to the IRS.
So the ordinance describes classes of property, residential, industrial, commercial. And if it's zone commercial, if I'm not mistaken, the zoning predicates or determines what the level of service that that property will receive. Commercial properties at present, in the current ordinance, will not receive service. Residential properties will receive service. Industrial properties, so we don't do business this way, so we're going to have to channel your conversation to council members if you wish to discuss it with them, either individually or your district representative or city staff. So we do have an agenda, and our rules of the body are to move through that agenda. So the rules of the body, ma'am, as I explained a number of times, are for the alderpersons to recognize individuals. Then they're brought to the front. If alderpersons do not recognize individuals, we continue to move through the speaking order. There was nobody else on the board that requested an opportunity to speak. So, thank you again. We're going to move on to item 10D, which is the Public Works Committee meeting held on June 10. Alderperson Kubaschak, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Report of the Public Works Committee meeting, June 10, 2019. The Public Works Committee met at 3:15 PM on Monday, June 10, 2019, in the first-floor conference room at City Hall. Thaddeus Kubaschak, Tom Rehm, and Scott Kellogg were present. Lee Graff was absent. Others attending included Joe Aixted, Joe Terry, Jack Swicker, Kurt Van Grinsven. Item number one called to order, meeting was called to order at 3:15 PM. Item number two, review staff referral to review a request to modify a change order for installing a manhole for the West Side List Station project. Motion by Kubaschak, second by Kellogg, was to approve $38,561.97 in addition to the time and materials not to exceed manhole replacement change order. This amount includes bypass pumping, shoring, and other related costs due to change in conditions of an unexpected structure adjacent to the manhole. Also approved is an additional rock excavation amount to be determined by the city and contractor based on a unit price allowance for actual rock excavated. Motion passed three to zero. Item number three, adjourn, motion by Kubaschak, second by Kellogg, to adjourn. Motion carried three to zero, meeting adjourned at 4:09 PM. And with that, I will make the motion for approval.
Motion to approve by Kubaschak and a second by Coth. Any requests to speak? See no requests to speak, motions to approve as presented. Please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, six ayes, zero nays.
Item 10E, the Human Resources Committee meeting held June 5. Alderperson Blazer.
Thank you. The Human Resource Committee met at 4:45 PM on Wednesday, June 5, the third floor conference room. Members of attendance were myself, Alderperson Kellogg, Zurflu, Rehm, HR Director Dawn Urban, Adam Teagan, and Jay Bemke. First item was, we're called to order at 4:46. Second item is discussion approval to renew health insurance with Aspiris arise for 7/1/2019. Health insurance rates will be decreased by 2% and the new rates are $741.74 for a single, $1496.74 for a limited family, and $2,142.57 for a family. Retiree rates are $567.44 for a single, $1,134.86 for a single plus spouse, both Medicare eligible, and $1,324.01 for a single plus spouse, only one Medicare eligible. Water light rates are as follows, $756.57 for a single, $1,526.67 for a limited family, and $2,185.42 for a family. The retiree and water light rates have a 2% administrative fee approved by council June 19, 2018. Motion was made by Alderperson Zurflu, seconded by Kellogg, to accept the rates as presented. The motion carried. Item three is discuss approval to extend our current contract with Laurel Eye Führer for inspection services. There was a brief discussion around inspection services for the city. Adam Teagan, Director of Community Development, indicated that the purpose of retaining a third-party contractor is to help with the inspections backlog. A motion was made by Chairperson Blazer to enter into a modified agreement with Laurel Eye Führer to provide inspection services for up to 16 hours per week. Motion seconded by Zurflu, and the motion carried. There was a discussion, or item four is discussion approval of the revised return-to-work policy that incorporates the revised return-to-work process. A discussion took place around the revised policy, and Dawn Urban clarified that this policy is being revised to reflect recent changes to the injury reporting policy or consistency. A motion was made by Alderperson Kellogg to approve the return-to-work policy as presented. Motion was seconded by Zurflu, and the motion carried. Item five was a discussion approval of the termination policy. This was a referral follow-up. There was a brief discussion around the policy, and it has been renamed separation of employment. A motion was made by Alderperson Zurflu, seconded by Kellogg, to approve the policy as presented. Motion carried. Item six was a standing, is the standing agenda item regarding current city job openings, and those openings can be found on the city's website. The next meeting was set and scheduled for July 2, 2019, at 5 PM. I believe we've changed that, right? Correct, we've changed that to July 8. Item eight was adjourned, the meeting adjourned 5:07 PM. And with that, prior to make a motion, does anybody want to hold out anything? All right, let's make a motion to approve.
Motion by Blazer to approve and a second by Kellogg for the entire report. Any requests to speak? See no requests to speak, the motion is to approve. Please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, six ayes, zero nays.
Item 10F, the Legislative Committee meeting held on June 3, 2019.
I need to find that one here. 196? I missed my tabs.
They're there, they should be. Yeah.
Oh, wait a minute. It caught us. Okay, 196, there it is. Great. The Legislative Committee met at 5 PM on Monday, June 3, in the first-floor conference room at City Hall. We'll just go with members of attendance or file at the clerk's office. First item of business was consideration for adoption of an ordinance revising Chapter 15, the Plumbing Code, adding language regarding lockable bypass valves. Motion by Coth, seconded by Blazer, to adopt, as presented, the ordinance revision to Chapter 15 Plumbing Code, adding language regarding lockable bypass valves. Motion carried, and the ordinance is attached. Item three is consider for adoption an ordinance revision to Chapter 6 Streets and Sidewalks, which addresses mobile vending regulations. Motion by Coth, seconded by Kubaschak, to adopt, as presented, the ordinance revisions to Chapter 6 Streets and Sidewalks, which addresses the mobile vending regulations. Motion carried, and added ordinance is also attached. Item four is consider the following resolution for support of League of Wisconsin municipalities' priorities as they relate to the upcoming legislative and budget issues with the state legislature. Those resolutions include increased levy limits flexibility, fixing the state transportation funding shortfalls, and increasing local transportation aids, and shared revenue funding increase. The motion by Coth, seconded by Kubaschak, to adopt all three ordinance, or adopt all three resolutions as presented. That motion carried. Item five is consider the adoption of an anti-bullying policy, or ordinance. It was moved by Blazer, seconded by Coth, to adopt the anti-bullying ordinance as presented with the addition of graduated schedule of forfeitures for subsequent offenses. The motion carried, see attached ordinance, which contains the graduated schedule of forfeitures. Item six is consider the adoption of an ordinance revising Chapter 2 of the city administration, which would have an alderperson be one of the regular voting members of the Water Light Commission. It was moved by Coth, seconded by Blazer, to adopt the ordinance as presented. With the revisions that the alderperson member would be appointed for one year, the first alderperson shall be appointed to take the regular place, to take the place of a regular member of, member whose term expires October 1, 2019. That motion carried, see attached ordinance, which contains the amendments as requested by the committee. Item seven is consider creating a ninth automatic district. It was moved by Coth, seconded by Kubaschak, to consider creating a charter ordinance which would create a ninth automatic alard seat, with the first term of the alderperson being the first-year term to be elected in April 2020, actually being a one-year term, to be elected in 2020, and then subsequent terms would be two years, with addition in, with elections in odd number of years. Questions were raised about whether a sitting alderperson could run for an alard seat, and whether an alderperson could run for two seats at a time. Also, if that if it was permissible, could a council, council limit the ability of an alderperson to do so? The city attorney was directed to advise the committee and council with answers to those questions before a charter ordinance was prepared. Number eight is, oh, motion carried. Number eight is consider creating ordinance for alcohol license restrictions for online retail alcohol ordering and pickup. Motion by Coth, seconded by Blazer, to adopt the online ordering and curbside pickup of alcohol beverage ordinances, beverage ordinance as presented, with the exceptions of Section F and G, which relate to wait times for pickup and restricting pickup after certain hours. Motion carried, see attached ordinance, which contains those amendments requested by the committee. There was a, item nine is discussion regarding the prohibition of feeding birds in city parks. No action was taken. Item 10 was set the next meeting date. The committee will schedule a meet as necessary, generally within, when minimum of four items have been referred to the committee. There was a motion and a second to adjourn the meeting, which carried. The meeting adjourned at 7:20 PM. Anybody like to hold out anything?
I'd like to hold out, item number...
I'd like to hold out, item number 5.
5, 4. No, we don't need to do them all. Any other items? Okay, with that, I'd like to make a motion that we, we adopt the balance of that report, please. Oh, I'm sorry.
Alderperson Raome, you were going to grab Alderperson Blazer's attention. Was there an ordinance, or item you wanted to have held out? We've got 4 and 5 for now.
I'll hold out 6. And 9.
Right.
And 7, and 7 wasn't.
So we're going to hold out 4, 5, 4, 5, 6, 7. And 9. So that leaves items...
The next meeting date.
Not quite. All right. Okay, we'll, we'll hold out item 7, so that'll leave, yeah, that'll leave 4, 5, 6, 7, and 9 held out. We all clear on that? That leaves a balance of the report. We have a motion by Blazer to that effect. Is there a second? Second by Coath. Any discussion on the items that remain? 2, 3, and 8, correct. Seeing no requests to speak, please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, six ayes, zero nays.
We'll take them in order. Item number 4. Alderperson's, what are your wishes regarding that item?
What is it?
We're going to just need a minute to load those in the computer here. Okay, we'll move on to item number 4. Are there any requests to speak? Alderperson Kubashak?
Yeah, I'll quick speak on this. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was the one that held it out, and this is a, these three resolutions are recommended from the League of Wisconsin Municipalities. And I think, interestingly enough, with this Legislative Committee, we did a really good job of vetting everything out, but with this specific, these three, I don't, I'm not suggesting that we approve them separately, but if we approve them, this is something that we definitely want to approve unanimously, if we are going to approve it, because then we can take this and we can compel our state legislators with this, as well as send it to the League of Wisconsin Municipalities for support with other municipalities with this. So I guess with that said, I'll make a motion to approve the three resolutions here. Thank you.
A motion by, to approve by Kubashak, is there a second? And a second by Katniss, any further discussion? The only thing I would mention is state budget update. I think the only item in here that's received a positive reception in the Wisconsin Legislature is item B. I don't believe items A or C have any, received any consideration by the Joint Finance Committee in Madison, so perhaps this will be one more of those reasons for us to get this very timely to them tomorrow. Any further requests to speak? Seeing none, the motions to approve, please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, six ayes, zero nays.
Takes us to item number 5. Alderperson Coath, you're first.
Thank you, Your Honor. First off, I'm going to state that I am in favor of this bullying ordinance, but we had a pretty good discussion on it in the Legislative Committee, and I will make a motion after I make some comments here, because I'd like to add on to it. I first want to thank the Superintendent of the Wisconsin Rapids Public School and our Police Chief for working on this. They did a very good job, and I think, thank them for bringing this forward to the council for consideration, and I hope that we adopt it. This has come a long ways from when it first come up in March at a Legislative Committee to where it is now, and there's been some conversation along the way, and this has obviously gotten attention around the state. And I've been thinking about how we got to this point where we, as a governmental body, are considering having to have a anti-bullying ordinance, and regretfully, this just seems to be the day and age that we live in where we need something like this to protect our children. I had a bully when I was in grade school. I used to get a basketball bounced off my face, so now some of you that work with me kind of know what's wrong. You know, in, being a school kid in elementary school in the late 80s, early 90s, there were still some of the things that were in place today where you're supposed to raise your hand, tell the teacher, and then it gets worse, because then you're a tattletale. And for me, it never ended until me and that kid had a very spirited discussion that involved thunder and lightning out back behind someone's house. And after that, the problem for me went away by the time I made it to junior high. But now, kids can't do that anymore. That is absolutely not permissible for kids to take care of the problem themselves. And I think it's hard, because our teachers are overworked, they have limited resources, and they try to do the best with what they can, and sometimes the teachers don't say it, and even if the kid does say something, it's certainly the same it was 30 years ago, where if a kid raises their hand and they say something to somebody that they're being bullying, it gets worse for them. It gets amped up. And one thing that's much different now, as opposed to what it was 30 years ago, is, is that kids are accessible 24 hours a day, through their cellphones, through social media. And you look at some of these bullying cases, you look at to the point where kids have been bullied to where they take and make an attempt on their life, and in some cases, ultimately succeed in ending their life. That's a very hard thing for any parent to deal with. I speak as a parent that has had to bury a kid, not from bullying, but still nonetheless, I have had to bury one of my kids. It's horrible. I like the idea that we're doing this, but what do you say to a parent that loses their kid from bullying? Or what do you say to a parent whose kid is laying in ICU in the hospital after a suicide attempt? Don't worry, your kid's getting a, the kid that bullied your kid's getting a $50 fine, which will add up to $313 after court costs? How do you put a monetary value on the life of a child? I don't think there's any way to do it. In the Legislative Committee, I advocated for a stiffer penalty for bullying, because I asked the question when I started speaking, how did we get here? If the government, if a governmental body is being asked to pass an ordinance to look at bullying, how many levels have failed before we got to that point? The parenting at home, or the guardianship at home has possibly failed. The school might have failed to catch it. The administration of the school might have failed to catch it. Friends have failed to intervene and do something. To have a governmental body and law enforcement involved should really be a last resort, but I do agree with our school superintendent and the police chief that law enforcement does need another tool in their box that they can use to combat this, and I'm all in favor of giving it to them. You know, as a parent, this might not be a very popular remark to say, but I'm going to say it anyways, I think part of the problem in society is, is that parents are not held accountable for their child's actions. When I was a kid, my dad had a piece of 2x4 about this long, and there was writing on both sides. One side said the heat of the seat, and the other side said the board of education. And it didn't matter what side I got, they both hurt the same. But that's another thing that's changed to this day and age. I don't know how many other parents I hear, they say, "I'm afraid to discipline my kids because I don't want to get in trouble for child abuse. I can't yell at my kids. I can't spank my kids. I can't ground my kids. They won't listen anyways." I believe being involved in your kids' lives is important, having discussions with them is important, knowing what's going on is important, but I also believe discipline is important as well. Maybe not to the point of smacking them with a 2x4, but nonetheless, discipline is important for, for children. I think that's a lost virtue in our, our society today. So anyways, what I have, and I got a copy for the city attorney, and I hope others on council will approve this, but I would like to make a motion to adopt the anti-bullying ordinance with the additional language that says, "Any person or persons who engage in the act of bullying, which results in the severe injury or death of another person or persons, shall be subject to a fine of up to $5,000. For any persons under the age of 18 who bully another person and their actions result in the severe injury or death of another person, the legal guardian of that person shall be subject to a fine of up to $5,000." I say this because if it's gotten to this point, and we want to have an anti-bullying ordinance, I support the first measures that are outlined with a letter and the lesser fines, but I want to take it a step further to make sure that we are covering the whole thing, that if a child in our school system, or another person, is bullied to the point where they make an attempt on their life, and God forbid if they're successful, that there are penalties that are harsh and severe, so that we're sending a message that their bullying will not be tolerated in our city by anybody.
Thank you, Alderperson Blazer. You're, actually, we've got, sorry, we've got a motion on the floor to approve with the amended language, of which we're happy to reread that for everyone's benefit, perhaps before a second? Not looking like there's anyone wishing. Motion was to approve, as presented, with the additional language, "Any persons who engage in the act of bullying which results in the severe injury or death of another person or persons shall be subject to a fine of up to $5,000. For any person under the age of 18 who bully another person and their actions result in this, in, in the severe injury or death of another person, the legal guardian of that person shall be subject to a fine of up to $5,000." Is there a second? Do you have a point of clarification?
That's already handled, the criminal part, correct. Technically, that...
If there's a case probably that could be made to...
My law enforcement has kind of slipped out of my brain over the years now, so, but it's really, they're, they're held, they could be, they'd be held criminally for that.
Right. Every, all of the conduct in the municipal ordinance is covered in the criminal code. What we can do as a municipality is, is only really fine, and it's, they're not crimes. So something probably more serious would probably be charged more seriously than municipal court, but, yeah.
Is there a second? Seeing no second, the motion fails. Move back to Alderperson Blazer, you had a request to speak.
Well, I guess, I'll start by making a motion that we adopt the language as presented. I do agree with Steve, maybe not, not as far, but I pretty much agree with everything he says, except thunder and lightning, because I only needed thunder, but, you know, I, I don't know if anybody else I had gotten a long email from a psychologist from out east. Obviously, we made national news on this, and, you know, and he has some points, but, you know, sometimes it takes law enforcement intervention, and I think that's where we're at, by creating an ordinance and giving law enforcement a tool to use, and I'm satisfied and happy that we have a graduated offense for the ordinance. But I guess ultimately, I'd like to see if the police chief or the school superintendent would like to speak. I'd like to yield some time if they have anything they'd like to say.
I'll take a second on the motion, and then we'll move into that item. Is there a second to the original motion? A second by Kubashak. Now we'll yield to time. Craig, do you want to come forward?
Sure, thank you. Craig Boren, Superintendent, Wisconsin Rapids Public Schools. Thank you, council members and Mayor Brumick, for entertaining the ordinance possibility. I also have to start with an apology if I speak, or slur my speech, or sound funny. It's because I had a wisdom tooth extracted at 3 o'clock this afternoon, so...
Sorry for that.
Oh, yeah, well, it's way better than it was, so that, that tells you. One of the pieces of clarity that I want to offer to the topic, because there seems to be some confusion around what kind of a continuum of intervention might look like, right? So if this ordinance would be put into place, there's very clearly no change that transpires on the school district level, and clearly I can speak for Wisconsin Rapids Public Schools. That being, we are going to continue with and continue to examine different options at bullying curriculum, which would be, you know, all group or classroom-based, counseling-based. We're going to continue with counseling and mental health services, and we're going to continue with the most rudimentary interventions that we already engage, which would be bring the kids in, identify the nature of the problem, you know, talk with them about modifying said behavior, contact parents, and frankly, if that's where it ends, that's where it ends. So there is, I would argue, somewhat of a misconception, and even if it's in only social media posts and commentary around what this continuum looks like, we already have an excellent relationship with our law enforcement partners, with Chief Blevins, and with Mel Peterson in Grand Rapids as well. We have school resource officers that are shared employees between the district and the city, and so we engage on a number of levels, and I can adamantly tell you that if this is involving our school district, it's not the first step to contact law enforcement and say, "Give this person a citation." That makes no sense. This would be part of a continuum of opportunity that we have with respect to behavior modification, right? So none of the things that we have been doing, or new items that we will, you know, implement long-term, will be modified. The biggest modifier of behavior is individual intervention. So one of the questions that's out there is, you know, why would bullying continue? You know, we talk about bullying, and I never got an email from the psychologist that was referenced, but I probably read some commentary around, "This is a bad idea, and here's the reasons why." And I'm not going to stand here and tell you that I totally disagree with that statement. I, you know, I do buy into that, but frankly, individual to a degree, individual intervention is the most relevant. So if I have an issue with a group of students, and I know the one or two students responsible, I don't deal with it with the group. You might have a conversation with the group, but the students responsible are the ones that you deal with. That's the most effective way to modify behavior. And then frankly, if we've exhausted our possibilities, you know, detention, parent phone call, detention, suspension, in-school and out-of-school, and maybe even, you know, loading up a kid for potential expulsion if the behavior is bad enough, that's where we're bringing some intervention with respect to an independent organization in law enforcement coming in to say, "Let's look at the facts of the case, and let's identify whether or not we feel bullying in fact did occur, and if it did, and it didn't stop, maybe you are eligible for a citation." I also stand here before you as a parent, three kids, and I can adamantly tell you that I don't stand here because my kids are victims of bullying. In fact, they've had a great experience thus far here at WRPS. I can also tell you that I don't think that Wisconsin Rapids is any different than any other community in the state of Wisconsin, or any other community across the nation. Bullying's an issue here, just like it is anywhere else, and I would argue communities that claim they don't have bullying are probably not being upfront with you. The request was not because we felt there was this, you know, significant, specific, highly intense issue here. The request was as a result of, again, adding another tool to the toolbox, cultivating that already established relationship that we have, and then the final caveat, caveat which I already alluded to again, is behavior modification that's quite explicit. So engaging with parents around ensuring that behavior stops or changes. So engaging with parents around ensuring that behavior stops or changes or modifies. And I will say one more time, that would be after a continuum of opportunity to change that behavior through traditional means was, you know, undertaken. And that's the piece that I don't want to lose sight of. And I also, you know, close by saying thank you for the time that was yielded and the opportunity to, you know, have you entertain this ordinance. Thank you.
Craig, would you mind standing up just in case others have questions?
Absolutely.
Or Shane, did you have anything further on your time? Anybody else that is in the speaking order that have a question for Craig or any comment? I just have a quick comment and then a question. And you've addressed all the other questions because as has been alluded to tonight, and you are fully aware of all the media attention and all the commentary on this particular matter. A question, thank you for addressing the continuum of intervention. I think a lot of folks assume, and it gets lost based upon the media articles, that this is the intervention and it's not replacing anything. In fact, it's quite a bit at the tail end of what we hope is far more successful interventions that prevent from getting to that point. And the question, I guess, relates to referral for counseling or other mental health services. And maybe if you could just unpack that for me for the benefit of those who have asked the question, perhaps that might be watching or have, catch us on recording later.
Absolutely. So one of the things that anybody in Wisconsin state government or in education or anybody that works with kids in the state of Wisconsin is going to tell you that we're woefully unprepared and ill-equipped to deal with youth mental health issues. That's probably the biggest banner issue that we're dealing with. And I think when I say that, I'm talking about a continuing of counseling opportunity, a continuum, pardon me, of counseling opportunities that we have in-house. And keep in mind, our school counselors and school psychologists are not psychiatrists or child mental health experts. Our staff are trained to do mental health triage or mental health first aid. We have, you know, become working towards a trauma-informed environment in our schools. And we're engaged as much or more than any other district in the state of Wisconsin. But what you're also going to hear is that access to resources, particularly for our kids, are limited with respect to mental health. We do have partnerships with private consulting or private services, counseling services that are housed within our school. So it's, you know, you don't have to pull a kid out to receive services and so forth. There are several of our buildings that offer those sort of opportunities. But there too, there are issues with staffing and so forth. Addressing mental health issues in our school-aged kids, there's no quick, easy fix. Even if we had, you know, a thousand psychiatrists that were prepared to do significant mental health counseling with our students, all accessible to us, that's still a long-term fix to a problem because, of course, you know, this isn't writing a prescription or just having, you know, two one-hour conversations and voila, you're fixed. So when I reference that, what I mean is we are, I mean, there's no time in my experience where school employees would say, "You know what? It's not a problem. Don't worry about it," and move on with a kid in 2019. Through a process of investigation, through a process of identifying, you know, what does this look like? The problem solving that we engage in may ultimately culminate in some counseling or a conversation with a parent that says, you know, "Based on what we're seeing, because it seems that there might be some underlying circumstance." Or this student has shared with a counselor, there's some underlying, you know, issues that he or she may benefit from counseling. That's kind of the reference that I'm talking about, meaning it's yet another avenue. Nonetheless, I would argue if that person is receiving counseling and we've moved through the continuum and things get better, but all of a sudden we take a turn and the behavior continues, I don't think that precludes them from potential, you know, enforcement of this ordinance. "Oh, sorry. Well, I'm doing, you know, mental health therapy, so therefore I can continue the behavior." You know, I don't buy into that either. So it is about really rectifying that problem. And as the school district, we play a role in that process without question. And we try to engage as many individuals as possible in a climate and an environment where admittedly, it's probably not, you know, the state is not equipped or in a position where that they need to be to really dig in and provide meaningful intervention for youth mental health in particular.
My last question is related to DPI. And obviously, you talked about the requirements from a state level that the district has to adopt and adhere to as it relates to dealing with bullying or anti-bullying measures. Are there repositories for data collection in terms of how many interventions and that contact that occurs? You talked about sort of the issue from, in comparison to other districts. I think that's been a concern or a question that's been raised. How big of an issue is this compared to other places? But is there a state mandate around requirements or around reporting or any data collection as it relates to interventions or cases maybe at the district level?
There is. There's anti-discrimination reporting, bullying based on protected class is part of that. So bullying based on sex, you know, creed, so forth and so on. And I think the issue there is the wide degree of variability with reference to how you interpret what bullying actually is. Because very clearly, you know, making a snide comment to a person is not bullying, right? There's a power differential. It's long-term. It precludes another individual from their, the basic rights to, you know, attend school and go about their regular day. And it's typically long-term. It's not an isolated event or two. And so part of that reporting that we're obligated to report back to the state is you have that ability to kind of, you know, determine when it's entered is this quote-unquote bullying. And that is based on our perception as an individual district. And in some cases, that might even, you know, differ to a minor degree even between buildings, right? I think there's some cases, of course, where it is quite clear-cut and, you know, boom, it gets logged as such. But if you take that times the 421 school districts in the state of Wisconsin, you're probably going to have, you know, a few different flavors on what's reported and what is not via that reporting portal. So is there some tracking around that topic? Yes, there is. Is there some kind of statewide or nationwide repository around effective bullying interventions? And here's the magic recipe that you implement and all of your problems will be solved? The answer to that is no. This has been, as you indicated, a nationwide, it's receiving nationwide attention. And I know that there's programs out there in restorative justice and counseling. And, you know, we know those things, and we will engage, you know, what we do now and we'll change and try new things and so forth until we address the issue as best we can. But there isn't. There's no magic recipe. And one of the other issues too, that I think engagement with law enforcement helps on this topic is because it's yet another reporting opportunity. It's yet another venue for education of kids and parents with respect to the process from, you know, a different organization in law enforcement. And that idea around bullying being something that's covert and we're just keenly aware and like, yeah, you know, turning a blind eye. Again, I cite, I don't know a school employee from custodian all the way up to myself that's going to understand and see a kid going through something like that and simply say, "You're fine, dude. Just deal with it." Those circumstances truly don't exist. Now, what interventions we engage in, what activities we do with that kid and their family, you know, if the behavior stops or if it doesn't stop, if there's other people responsible, there's a number of nuances as you work through all of these cases. And so paring it down to say, in every case, this is clear-cut bullying and I report it to the state. This is not. There is a spectrum in between those two categories, not bullying and bullying, that could probably go either way as it goes down that continuum. So that's some of the difficulty with respect to saying, "Here's interventions that have been tried. Here's the occurrences. And oh, look, we saw a 10% decrease or a 20% decrease," and so forth. And then I'll finally say, the cyberbullying piece is another tough nut to crack because as was indicated, 24/7, 365. And clearly, we have no knowledge of that information unless it's brought forward. What kids are dealing with via Snapchat or, you know, Twitter or other social media. And how do you engage and stop those things? Because again, individual intervention's the most effective intervention, right? You deal with the kid that's causing it. Talking to a group of people is somewhat effective, but less so than it is individual intervention.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Craig? Well, he's still at the podium. Tom?
Not a question. Just, I think, I'd like to thank Superintendent for clarification for me. Because I think there, at least my perception, it seems that a lot of people, I think, were reading into that this is taking the place of the school. And that's why personally, I was having a hard time accepting what was here because I was thinking more in the terms of what you were saying. You know, it's another step in the process. And hopefully, it would never get there, you know. But things runs, has to run through its course and whatever. Hopefully, step by step, that things could be resolved.
Absolutely.
A problem that I still have within the ordinance, though, is the penalties at the end. Through this, you know, being based upon what Plover had, where the $50, I believe, which is what ours had to start with. Now, what we have in front of us this evening is, it's the 50, but it's less than what was discussed. I will say, it's less than what was discussed at the committee meeting a couple of weeks ago. But it's a, there's a graduated scale of, you know, obviously, this would, I guess, be in the courts to go through that. But $50, $100, $250, and, you know, to some, to a lot of people, I think, that sounded maybe that's pretty cheap. But the $50, then it came to light in one of the, in the committee meeting, was actually $313 or whatever dollars because, and where does that come from? People were asking. You know, people didn't realize that there was an added cost to what the fine is, like any, like any fine would be. You have court costs and that that are added to it. So I appreciate everything you did say. It clarified a lot of things in my mind. Like I said, I think the perception is that this is, maybe not replacing, but that this becomes a, where the school may be here, this is the, police department's going to be here. It's going to be a pick or choose who go, where it goes.
Right.
As I understand what you said, it is not that. And that's where I, I had to say that because I really, I really believe in my heart and mind that there is that misconception amongst a lot of people. And that's, I think, there again, and I said at one of the committee meetings, was that, you know, the big problem is our social media that's there. People can say what they want without having to back up who they are or what or anything. And that just has to do with bullying. That has to do with politics and everything, no matter what people want to talk about on there. But that, it's a, so that, this is another step in the process. I can accept that. But I cannot, I don't like having that, the added fines that are there at the end. I hate to say because that, if I vote for it, that becomes part of that. I would be willing to send this back to the committee or to remove that, to take those added, added steps out of there, fines out of there, the graduated system if that need be. Otherwise, you know, I'm tempted that I'd have to vote no tonight to have another reading on this to see if, over the course of another month, that I could change the people's mind of having the graduated scale at the end. Where I have come to believe in what is there is there. But there are a lot of issues. You touched on the mental health issues, which is a big problem in this country with everything. And there's only so much the school district is, can't handle with what they have, resources they have. But there's a lot, there's a lot to look at other than just trying to write an ordinance with that the end has a penalty. And that we have to, there has to be that we have to try to remedy the situation before we even, even get to that point. And, you know, for what is in there or in the ordinance, and I did have, she did go on the computer for me today, because I've said I meant to do, I meant to do it, and I keep forgetting to do it, was to look up what the state statutes that are referenced in this ordinance, what they are. So my wife did go in and bring it up and copied off what those, what's in there of those four state statutes. Because it's, not that it's maybe necessarily an interesting reading, but a lot of times when we have ordinances and refers to statutes and, you know, like that stuff, it sounds good, but nobody knows what it is until you look at it. And so I did take the time to try and decipher what some of that said. That falls more in the police chief's hands as we would get to that, I guess. But interesting, interesting reading too. So again, though, I wish the group up here would consider possibly staying with the $50 that it was originally and to leave it at that, so.
For clarity's sake, my request that, I didn't talk about the substance of the ordinance, simply passing it forward. So when I went to the first legislative committee conversation, I said, "Whatever you guys choose to do and how you choose to move this down the continuum is not, you know, that's not at our discretion." So whatever the decision of the council happens to be, whether it's pro or con or whether it's with modifications or without, I think we cited the rationale as to why we, why we as an organization and myself personally want to move forward with something along those lines. And frankly, what the fines are, whether they're graduated or static is, that's not consequential to me nor the request. I would also cite too, and I have to give credit to Dan Alt at Over in Plover. I think most of you folks know, I'm not sure where he got a hold of the ordinance idea in the first place. But with reference to its implementation in 2015 to where we are now, I don't think that they've issued one citation, or if they have, it's been one in a four-year period. And I would argue if they had data that said we've issued dozens or hundreds or thousands of these citations, I probably wouldn't have forwarded the request to you because that's indicative of an ordinance that probably doesn't work. So I think that when you talk about data and you talk about the substance of the ordinance, our closest neighbor in Plover that has the ordinance implemented has data that I think quite clearly says, "We've issued several letters, but I think one or maybe zero citations over a four-year period." To me, that's a positive, that the ordinance is, is working. I would also say you have an opportunity over the course of the next, if this is adopted as it is or as modified, over a 12-month or 18-month period to reevaluate where we're at. And I'm happy to come before you anytime and share with you what I know. And I'm sure Chief Blevins has the same attitude.
Thank you, Craig. Anything further from Craig? Shane? We'll get through the...
Yeah, I guess, I'll wait. I just had a follow-up question for Mr. Raome, but...
Oh, okay. Craig, I think we're set for your presence at the podium for the moment, so you can take a seat if you'd like.
Appreciate the opportunity.
Alderson Blazer, you got a follow-up question for Raome?
Well, I just want to compliment you, Craig. I agree. I had 35 years of school administration, and it is the spectrum. I mean, when we implement this, it's everybody, it doesn't go to the judge and the fine. There's so many things that happen. And I think less than 1% of the students would ever get to court and have a fine possibly provided. But that's what the judge is for. I mean, by the time it goes through all the processes in school, going through the police department, counselors, psychiatrists, or whatever it might be, and finally, some student gets to that final step and has to go to the court, well, then it has to be litigated, as far as I'm concerned, and that's a small portion. And I guess I would be upset if people around thinking that "We're implementing this policy and there's problems in Wisconsin Rapid schools." That's far from it. And it just provides one more tool. And I just want to compliment what he said and echo that, the idea of fines. I kind of like the fines at the end because it's for that one student that just doesn't get it. Thanks.
Alderson Raome, we've come to you, and we'll come back if you had anything further. Alderson Blazer?
Yeah, I just want to follow up with you, Alderson Raome. You know, I think, you know, we're talking about the graduated fines and your questions about it. And like Mr. Kellogg said, you know, it's for that one student. The police officers show up and they end up writing a citation. It's 50, $313 with court costs. What happens the next week, they show up, they have that one student. That's, that second or third week down the road, there's another offense. Well, it gives them to step up the fine. Otherwise, they're just going to get another $50 ticket. It's like drunk driving, underage drinking. They're all graduated on multiple offenses. And that's why my interest in having a graduated fine schedule at the end was, and hopefully, we don't have that person where they're hitting those multiple offenses. But should that happen, I think the offense or the consequence needs to be more serious than the first offense. And that's why I favor the graduated offense. So that second time they show up, it's $100 plus court costs. Or I can't remember what second offense is. And it, I think it needs to be treated more seriously. By the sounds of it, hopefully, we would never see a second offense that it's dealt with. But as we know, there's 10, 20 drunk driving. So they're out there, and it happens. And so if it does happen, there's that next step that law enforcement can take above another $50 ticket. Thank you.
Further requests to speak, Alderson Katnau, do you have, requested you withdraw your, I saw it up there. Alderperson Katnaud, do you have requested you withdraw your, I saw it up there, and it's.
Yeah, I withdrew my request. I'm in favor of the ordinance. Think that most of it's been said, I would just be repeating it, but I agree that it is another tool in our police forces, a toolbox that they can utilize with their own discretion in, in certain areas. I expect that this would be similar to what Craig said in that we're not going to be issuing these out all the time, which I think when people hear this on the news is that we're going to be showing up and issuing tickets, and I don't believe that's going to be the case, so, thank you.
Further requests to speak? We've got a motion, a second on the floor, just a quick comment. It kind of results in the generalization I've seen across some of the media articles and commentary thereof, and that is that the local government has, the school district, I think, has been addressed around their ability to solve the problem or work through the issues, but I think the question about the municipality, the generalization of the municipality, of being able to just find our way through this, and I think it's been said, I don't need to state it, but I want to make the, sort of set the media correct and, and not those local media members that are in the audience, but some of the threads that government in general, sitting back and just establishing a penalty, a fine, and expecting the behavior to change. And I think we, we know that's not the reality, it's just what's been said. Alderperson Blazer, you got another comment?
Yeah, I just, I forgot to thank the school board members in attendance here showing support or, or just being here supporting the cause.
Any further requests to speak? Alderperson Coth?
There's a person in the audience that wanted to speak.
Come, come forward, introduce yourself and.
My name is Heather Coth. I live at 481 Plover Street in Wisconsin Rapids. I've been deciding whether I wanted to come forward to speak or not. From a parent's standpoint, I can understand the confusion with bringing this forward. I do agree that this, any step to take helps. However, from the parent's standpoint, it seems like the school is absolving themselves of any responsibility and putting it back on the, the parent. And while I agree that the parenting starts at home, us parents entrust our kids in the school system, so it, it transfers responsibility. And basically, what it boils down to is I feel, and I feel other parents do too, that there needs to be some continuity in how this is dealt with, because my kids were bullied, I was bullied, my stepkids were bullied, and this one instance in particular is, I brought it to the school, the principal, and he felt that it was just kids being kids, and that seems to be kind of the, especially at the younger age, that seems to be the common notion is it's, it's just kids being kids. But bullying on any level is, needs to be looked into. And, kind of lost my train of thought here. Just that, I'm sorry, about kids being kids, and that it, nothing was done. I mean, the principal just wanted to kind of shoo it away, and I, I said that I was going to call the police, and I did, and I got the same reaction from the police department is that, oh, you know, the age of the kid, this is just kids being kids, I'll look into it, yada, yada. I just, I really think that there, there needs to be more continuity in, in how this is dealt with, not just up for discretion as to how the officer decides it's handled. I think maybe in, in some of this language, it, it needs to be pretty clear that, I guess I myself would like to see the discretion taken out, because I think every instance is worth looking, looking into. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderperson Blazer?
Last time, I promise. We've all had an opportunity to speak, but the person who's in charge of enforcing this, I'd like to make sure he has an opportunity to, to give his thoughts on this, please.
Yeah, I'll try to keep it brief. First of all, I'd like to thank Craig for bringing this forward, and I just want to give him credit in the fact that our police department and the school district work very closely with, with each other, and we, we have a very good relationship. When Craig approached us with this, I supported it. The intention of this, and I want everybody to be clear, because there are some notions out there in social media and things, not every, not every incident on the playground or in the lunchroom or in the classroom is going to result in a ticket. That's hopefully the last resort. This is, like it's been said, is another tool for our police department to assist the school district in their efforts. We don't want to take over, and we won't take over, the responsibility for this issue from the school district, but we will be partners with them. And if any, in the, in the severe cases where our intervention becomes necessary, so be it, but there, we're there to support the school district, we're there to support the teachers, we're there to support the parents. It's a three-legged stool. Any one leg falls out, you can't sit. It's, it's the teachers and, and the school district, it's, excuse me, the parents, and it's the police department. Again, I hope that we don't have to write a citation ever. I hope that if it comes down to it, maybe we send this letter, that that's efficient. And, you know, some of the evidence from Plover proves that. So again, I just want to say that I'm, I'm in support of it, and I, I look forward to working with the superintendent on this, and hopefully that if we can help one kid, that's a win.
Alderperson Rayom, you're next.
Thank you, Your Honor, last time, hopefully, on this one anyway. Just, the discussion, talking, presentations have been good from the Wisconsin Rapid School District Police Department. Again, I thank you for that. One thing, I guess, that had slipped my mind is that what we're talking about here and the, intervening in the school district, you know, to take place to try and solve this before it would get to that ticket part, citation part and that, is that we're talking about the Wisconsin Rapids public school system. One thing I think that's not been discussed has been that with our private schools, of what some may be alluding to things that are happening or have happened and whatever, with them, what resource do they have within the public system? They don't, I mean, because we're not in that. So I hope again, and that, that goes back to what my, one of my fears were, if some of that's taking place in those situations of, is it going to fall right into the police department's hands first, or very shortly after it starts? And I know you don't have the answer to it, because it's the first, maybe it's the first time it's come up in discussions really, is that with this, is that, you know, we've heard from the public schools, and I, again, greatly appreciate that, of what, hearing what is going on, but there's a whole nother entity that's up there of where, where does that come into play, or how, or how do they, you know, is that get jumping past what one of my fears were of with this is, hey, now we got this, let's go to those guys with the badge on right away to see. And to, I don't believe that we have any liaison officers within the private school system at all, that we do in the public schools and that, so there's a, you know, we do, there is a difference of what state, of what we're talking about, of how this can get handled, or possibly a difference. Thank you, thank you.
See no further requests to speak? There's a motion, a second on the floor. Any further requests to speak? Seeing no further requests to speak, motions to approve, please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, five ayes, one nay.
We'll move on to item number, thank you for that. I'll move on to item number six, sorry, six was included in the previous items, we'll move on to seven, consider creating a ninth aldermanic district. Is that right?
Six is.
Oh, six was held out, sorry about that, I circled that. All right, move on to item six. Water Works and Lighting, aldermanic member of the Water and Light Commission. Alderperson Blazer?
I'll make a motion now, we approved the ordinance as presented.
A motion by Blazer, is there a second? Second by Coth, any discussion?
The Water and Light?
Yeah, sorry, I was, I misspoke, it's item six, Water and Light. Alderperson Katnaud, you're first.
Thank you. This is an ordinance that I am completely in favor of. I have a lot of residents who have came to me since I've been on city council and bring concerns about water and light and different thoughts and what the council should do with water and light. And although we are their overseeing body, however engaging in the voting of what happens during those meetings, we haven't had a, a part of. So I'm, I'm glad to see this on here, and I'm definitely in support of it, so.
Are there further requests to speak? Alderperson Rayom, you're next.
Thank you, Your Honor. I think, and I, I did mention, I do believe, at, at the meeting the other evening of, you know, who, who would be on this? I mean, an alderperson, obviously, but is this one that would fall under a, or, you know, would it be somebody from a committee standpoint, you know, representing a certain committee or not? That would be my feeling, somewhat this, I think, falls into what the next item to discuss of number seven, with different committees and that, but that, the premise of having a voting person on the, on the commission is okay, but who and how? In the past, it's been, at times anyway, hard to get people to volunteer to, to sit in. It's been, I, Scott's done it, I think, longer than I have even, that, you know, it's an interesting to go to, but, and to hear what discussion there is. But, you know, for this to take place, just to rely, I think, on an alderperson volunteering to be on it, something to that effect, I don't know if that's the right route we want to go. I, you know, there's a different, there could be a look at maybe from a finance committee standpoint, or the, you know, another way, I guess, you could look at even, would be a public works representative, but as committees stand now. So that, you know, that may be, that, I, I think we should give more consideration to that of a committee designate to be part of this commission. To me, I, I think it would give more even teeth to it, that we're going to be, it's going to, you know, we're not just going to go around which of the eight might want to do it or something like that, so I, I think we should, what, I, I agree with the, with the intent of what to do, but I, to how, I think we should narrow it down to what could, a committee that this person would come from.
Thank you. All I know is it does not say mayor serving on the commission. Alderperson Kubashak, you're next. No, just joking.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I want to reiterate what Mr. Rayom said. We're going to get back to that circle where I say it first and then you reiterate what I'm going to do, but tonight, I'm following your lead. But it's a case where I, I don't think that we vetted this yet. I don't think that this is, I, I'm not against it, but it is a case, who, who is going to be that person? Because, for example, with the Public Works Committee, the chairperson is also on the wastewater utility. Unfortunately, I am not able to attend day meetings on a regular basis, and it's hard for me to take off work, especially if I'm working on a town on a specific day. So we're looking at, we're going to have an agenda item to discuss approving someone from the Public Works Committee meeting, not necessarily the chairperson, to be on the, the wastewater commission. So then who would that be? And like Mr. Rayom mentioned, you know, would, would Water and Light be more of a finance committee type of a deal? But who's that person? And I think that there is also an element of, and I asked Mr. Rayom at the legislative, were you, you were at the legislative committee meeting, I asked if, because currently, right now, we've got two representatives that are non-voting members, that are, that go to these meetings or that are suggested to go to these meetings. But the question is, being a voting member, would that compel someone to want to go or to, to be at those meetings, rather than kind of more of a voluntary basis? So I, I think that there is merit to this, but I, maybe we might want to refine it a little bit before we actually approve it as an ordinance, so, thank you.
Alderperson Blazer, you're next.
I, I guess I disagree. You know, I, I think, why are we narrowing it down? For the same reason is, is your thoughts on changing the public works, or the chairman doesn't sit at, well, doesn't sit or shouldn't sit on the wastewater treatment commission, or, yeah, the wastewater could be one of the three public works. It's always been that way, or since the reorganization. And, you know, technically, you probably didn't know, but should that preclude you from becoming the chairman, being that, that's one of the responsibilities of the chairman? So my concern is narrowing it down to specific people, because ultimately, all three committees are only a recommending body to the whole, to the whole group. It's only recommendations. So what, what gives those specific people more power to sit on that committee? Because it's still, you're only recommending to the full body, they're just committee members. You know, so I, I think any one of the eight would be, or who knows the number down the road, but would be more than qualified to, to take on that responsibility. And if it's determined finances the committee, well, what if I feel, or the majority of us feel that somebody in public works, such as yourself, might be retired and have knowledge and might be a good person for that, well, you're not on the, on the right committee. I just think we're narrowing it down, and we're getting too detailed here on, there's still only eight, eight of us right now. Thank you.
Alderperson Katnaud, you're next.
Thank you, I agree with Alderperson Blazer. Right now, the ordinance reads the fifth commissioner for the Water and Light Commission shall be an alderperson who is selected by the common council at the organizational meeting for a one-year term, which is what we already do with two people to attend. And then that, it looks like that is crossed out, and this one person who would be a voting member would be the only person that we would elect, if, if that's correct, right? So I, I like that too, that it's general. Is, again, if you, as Alderperson Blazer said, if you narrow it down, it takes away options of people who may be able to better fit that with their schedule and other things of that sort, so.
A motion, a second on the floor, see no further requests to speak? The motion is to approve as it's presented, and I just, a point of order, all these ordinances, I believe, are in their first reading format, so be that as it may. Please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, five ayes, one nay.
Thank you. Next item is, it's seven? Seven, consider creating a ninth aldermanic district. Alderperson Blazer, you're first.
I'll start out, I'll make a motion to approve the ordinance.
You have a motion by Blazer and a second by Kubashak, moving to Alderperson Rayom?
There's not an ordinance.
There's no ordinance, that's correct. So Attorney Schill did want to make a couple of comments and then.
Right, you had some questions from the legislative committee. We cannot limit an alderperson, whether it's someone that's up for reelection at that same time, or who isn't up for reelection. We, we can't limit the ability of any alderperson to run for an at-large seat. So an alderperson can run for, for their seat, their seat and the at-large seat at the same time. You cannot, the, there are only certain requirements to be an alderperson, and, you know, you have to be an elector of the municipality, you have to live in the district, and be a, well, right, so, and you can't impose further limits on governing body members. So, so I guess what's left is basically the charter ordinance of being a one-year term, and then it would, subsequent terms would be two years, but you can't preclude any alderperson from, from running from that, that. alderperson from running from that seat. So, I guess my question is, knowing that, whether you wanna direct me to just do the charter ordinance as it's written out here? And I guess that's probably what Shane's motion was going to be, but I wanted to be sure on, that you understood that before we did the charter ordinance.
Alder Person Raum, you're first, and then I'll come back to Alder Person Blazer.
Thank you, Your Honor. I am in favor of increasing the number. Nine is one, it's also gone through my head of eleven. But, what I would, I am, at this time anyway, not in favor of an at-large alderman. I would be more apt, or would be apt, to go along with that we create a new alder manic district, or districts. In this case, it's being talked about in going to nine, a ninth alder manic district, which is not, I guess, a ninth district, in this case, would be to cover the whole city as a district, but, that, and to redistrict with the census in a couple of years. Can it be done at any time, Sue?
Can what be done at any time?
To redistrict.
No.
Just with the census.
Well, right, I mean, I, yeah, because I don't think it's, I mean, I guess it could be physically possible to redraw our districts to still be consistent with the mapping of the other districts, but I don't, I don't think they, I mean, it would be, it would, it'd be very difficult to do. And the earliest, actually, though, the redistricting could occur would be, after the census would be 2022, because it takes a while for everyone to do their, you know, to hone in on, then the locals, and we're the last to do it. But, maybe Shane might have some better information on the redistricting. I think it would be possible to create another district, but very difficult.
I agree. And also, the problem is, in 2022, we're the last ones to redistrict, so we're gonna have to redo it all again, because once the county supervisory districts start grabbing populations to balance themselves out, it's gonna change our lines. So, we'd have to redo it again anyways.
Correct. And I'm not, I'm not gonna disagree with that, but that's, I just, to me, it's, as we're set up with individual districts, right now, is that a ninth added at-large is not necessar, you know, not necessarily, but you could look at it one way as you're almost electing a sub-mayor, or a second mayor, in that sense, to me. And along with that, to go this route, would, there would be, there are added numbers at which to run for citywide office and that, there'd have to be a number for, to get for your nomination papers, it wouldn't be the twenty that are required in your districts, in a district now to get. Mayor, what do you guys, two hundred it is, I think? You know, somewhere, whatever, if that's what we'd have to go with, or up to that, or in between, it would be more, I'm sure, than what the twenty is, because it's a state, it would be a citywide thing. I, it's, again, this is one that, where I support the, I support the adding of that. I know there's a, there is a, you know, a concern of, you know, to the odd number, is if everybody was here, mayor, you wouldn't have to worry about a tie-breaking vote, because there would be the odd number. You know, so there is a concern of, that's one of the, would be, could be a reason to go that route. That's not number one on my list of why I would look at adding. But also, I think to back up to the item before, when I mentioned that it relate, could relate to this, is that, I think overall, our committees, that maybe we should take a look at what our committees are and committee duties are, and also how many people are on a committee. And I know it was stated, well, if we go to nine, we have three standing committees, that would be three, and somebody went to double duty. True. But, I also did say that, and I do believe that three on a committee is too few. I think that's why you see a lot of, you know, the fewer you get, it's harder to get, and I don't wanna use the word dissension, but it's hard to get, at times, discussion about an issue, and where that extra person may have been one that, hey, what if? And so, you know, there again, if you added four to a committee, you got that option, you could end up with two-two, you know, for votes, but I don't think that's real likely to happen too often, but I think, I think our committees, along with this, I think our committee structure, instead of just adding, looking at adding the person, or persons, that the committee structure itself and duties of the committee be looked at. I think, I think at times, off the top of my head, nothing is there, but I know what's there, because I thought of it in the past, at times, I wonder why something that, why certain things fall under certain committees? Why, when it may be a public works issue, that finance gets it, and vice versa? That I think that, our whole, to me, I think, if we're gonna look at this, let's look at the whole structure. And that, and that, to do that, is not something I think that happens in a month or two. But that's also the reason why, I think, if you go to adding a person or persons, that it can be, you know, you're pushing that button down the road, further down the road of the redistricting, or could be, to look at. So, I, you know, that, that's, my thoughts on this, it's not an ordinance, so it doesn't, you know, it's gonna go back, but, you know, for more discussion, and, but I think, just, I guess, think about some of the things I've said, and if you have questions in that, at that meeting, I did mention that, you know, I've looked at different, a couple of different communities, as they're on our cable system, that, to watch the different cities, of how they operate, and the different committees that they have, and what they're, who they're made up of. And not, when I say committees, I think that, to look at that, but also includes the commissions, to look at how the makeup of commissions, of what they do. You know, at times, I think that the commissions are almost making decisions for the council, that we've lost some of our duties, some of our authority. So, I think that to be looked at, too. So, that's why I think this is, can be, could be, it's a good time, I think, I think, could be a good time to look at what we're doing. Maybe nothing would change. Maybe I'm just dreaming up things in my own mind, but I'd like to be able to, you know, talk about this and present some things of some possible changes, and maybe you guys, just from listening to what I'm saying, is that, maybe there's things that are just clicking in your mind, hey, yeah, maybe something, we could do even one thing different, or something that would make the system better. I would, you know, I'm not making, wanna make it more structured, and that slows things down, and that, or anything like that, but maybe it'd speed things up at times, but sometimes we go too fast, though. But anyway, thank you, Mayor.
Alder Person, Catnaugh, you're next. Oh, sorry, Alder Person Blazer, already on the red, and I was always looking for the number, sorry.
I disagree. You know, I think the ninth is a good number. I think it's clear that the community spoke overwhelmingly that they don't want a big council through a referendum, and also, it came out through the Russell study years ago. And it gives us three in each committee. I don't look at an at-large person as a junior mayor, because they have no more power than any other council person. They are one vote. I think as we start reducing the size of districts, we're gonna run into the day where we're gonna have nobody that wants to run for that seat. And I don't think that, and I think Sue confirmed that, or at least, I know Pittsville had had issues such as that, so they went to all at-large aldermen, or aldermatic people, because they were running into districts where they did not have people that were interested in running. You know, we have eight districts, and I believe that, and some of us may have seen it over the years, that there could be a second great, which, which many people might believe would be a great alderman, and there might already be sitting a really good alderperson. Well, here's an opportunity for two people from the same districts that could be strong, good alderpersons, then opportunity to sit on the seat. And how many of us have all taken phone calls that aren't in our district? I know many times, I, instead of calling up that, hey, so-and-so's calling me, they need this, most of us are gonna help that person anyways. We're not gonna pass them off to another person. So, we're not even ourselves confining to our own districts, we're helping out constituents around the city. And so, I just believe that a ninth alderperson at-large would allow the governing body to make decisions by a majority vote. You know, on the onside, there's, and nothing, it's the mayor, but I, sometimes I think the mayor's role really shouldn't be that type of political decision makings. You know, they can make decisions, but, you know, politically, sometimes maybe our mayors should be neutral, or not be put in a position where they need to put out maybe what side that they, being favored or against, through a vote. You know, if a mayor wants to publicly speak out against an item, the mayor can make that choice. But I think forcing them, such as tonight, to make a decision on a three-to-three vote on a garbage thing now, but anyway, so I believe that, you know, the alderman at-large, or alderperson's at-large, or that seat, would fill that, filling a potential good candidate, and allow them to be on council without reducing the size of a district. Thank you.
Alder Person, Catnaugh, you're next.
Thank you. So, my, my thought on this is, I think our current form of government is set up correctly. It seems like a while back, the reduction of alderpersons was something the city wanted. To me, adding a ninth member would be like adding another member to the US Senate. I think voting for the executive branch at any form of government, but especially in one where we have an even amount of alderpeople, that's the citizen's biggest way to express their voice of who they want to lead the city, the one person, the one idea, which is tough to do when you're looking at a body that would control, and a mayor wouldn't be able to veto, or have much say in really anything, if it's always gonna be an odd number vote, and that five-four situation, possibly. So, I mean, that's my thought on it, so I'm gonna be voting no today. But, yeah, I'm not against anything Tom said with throwing ideas out there about possibly looking at different ways to change committees, other things, but as far as adding a ninth person and making an odd number of alderpersons, I'm not in favor of that.
Sorry. Alder Person Coth, you're next.
Just really a question, I think we kinda discussed at the legislative committee meeting, but I don't know if there was an answer to it, at least that were number one, but that was, the city by referendum voted to get the size of the council where it is now. My question is, is because of that referendum, can we legally increase the size of our council, given that referendum?
You can, and, but you do that by charter ordinance, which, because it's a charter ordinance, that means that it cannot take effect until after sixty days, because the electorate does have the opportunity to take that to a referendum. So, it's not just a regular ordinance, it's something that is built in, that, that the electorate, if they get a sufficient number of signatures, can force a referendum on the, on the issue.
Any further requests to speak? Alder Person Kubashak, you're next.
I'll be quick on this. This is one thing that I, I think I brought up, or I championed, a while ago, and we're kinda getting around to it. There is concerns, obviously, there is a concern, could this be like a stepping stone for mayor position? It's a, obviously, it's a citywide vote, but in state statute, the nomination paper signatures will be a hundred to two-hundred. It's half of what the full-time city, citywide elections for clerk, for attorney, for mayor, so it'll be a hundred to two-hundred. And there is concerns about, you know, potentially changing the dynamics of the council, but, you know, as far as the mayor having veto power, the mayor will still have veto power, that, that wouldn't take this away. This takes away tie-breaking power, and I think that, kind of agreeing with Mr. Blazer, it's a case where the mayor has, and I'm not talking about Zach, I'm talking about, you know, potential future mayors or whatever, the mayor has the statutory power of presiding over meetings. But, again, should the mayor be actually taking care of legislative issues, and that's where that tie-break comes into play? And, and again, nothing with Mr. Brewer, but it's a case where that mayor position should be, shouldn't be, and that's the cool thing, is that we have the ability to decide this. We have the ability to, if we didn't change the districts, if we actually did not redistrict, we could actually remove an at-large council member just as quick as we're removed, well, it would have to wait till the end of the term, obviously, but it, we could remove that position, too, without having to redistrict. It may work or may not work. But I think that sometimes change is hard. I think it's a case where sometimes we're concerned about the negatives with it, but we're almost too afraid to accept the positives that could come with it. And again, it's a case where nine would be three, three and three for committee members. But one thing, too, is that we also have the ability, and again, like Mr. Raum kinda talked about, in terms of reorganization, reorganizing our own local government, we have the ability to change it so that the council chooses who's the membership for each committee, too. Currently, right now, the mayor chooses who's gonna be on each committee, but we can change that as a charter ordinance to choose it. So, I mean, there's many different ways. We could have four committee members. The problem with having four committee members, if it does go two-to-two, the only way to pass legislation would be a supermajority, a three-to-one vote. And obviously, government is not designed to be very efficient and effective at the same time, but I think that that would really, really kind of slow down the gears of motion and what we need to do to take care of things. But, so, ultimately, with this, I said I wasn't gonna take that long speaking, but it's a case where I'm not necessarily so strongly with this, but it's, if it's something that, it's the pleasure of the body, I'd like to try it out. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any further requests to speak?
Seeing none, just a question, I think it's been already posed, and that's sort of what's the benefit of making a change, or any change, and I would just make one quick comment related to commissions and makeup. I think there are some instances where our city commissions, or the city spots on our commissions, may not necessarily serve the city and the city council well, and I think the airport commission is one such example, as a majority contributor of an operating, to operations, we have one vote, one vote, one voice. And I think that's one that perhaps could be added to the equation, very different than, but perhaps something that's on the table. So, I appreciate the mention on the commissions, I think sometimes it could be better served if we were to discuss some of those, so maybe that's something for food for thought. So, that's my only thought on that front. So, we have a motion and a second to approve as presented, well, actually, it was to direct the city attorney, sorry, to create the charter ordinance, as it's been outlined in the recommendation. the recommendation by the Legislative Committee. Any questions? All in favor, sorry, please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, four ayes, two nays.
All right, that takes us to item number nine. Alderperson Raym, you want to speak to that?
This will be quick. No, and I, there, you know, there was discussion the other evening and, uh, when this took, at the meeting, uh, so discussion, uh, there was discussion regarding a prohibition on the feeding of birds in city parks, and no action was taken. You know, with all the, I thought, with all the, or input maybe from, uh, community members over the years, is that of the, you know, our problems with the geese and that, that, that this would, that there'd be some type of action that was taken. So I was surprised that there was nothing done, and it was looked at that this is a, something, a pastime or a pleasurable entertainment for people to partake in, to do in the city. I, 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 I don't know. From my, from my point of view, from the comments I had heard, that that, that people didn't want that, and we were, over I don't know how many years, looking at different ways to, uh, and have spent money over the years of trying to, I mean, this oiling the eggs one, you can go back to many different ways we tried to do things over the last couple decades. Does it cost money to do? Yes. A lot of money compared to a new street? No, that we haven't spent that type of money, but we've spent a lot of money over the years. But this, what, what route do we want to go? If this is what we're doing, I say that we discontinue. Don't partake in anything like oiling up eggs and that. That we just, this is it. I thought at one point in time, we did have signs downtown on the riverbank of not being able to feed the birds and that, but I was told at that meeting that that wasn't the case. I, I guess I, so, uh, I just, I think we have to, with this, make the decision, is this what we're going to do? No action being taken to encourage people to feed the, the animals downtown, where people when they go down for the Fourth of July, not this year, well, this year, they'll be down there because it will be downtown, but I mean, it's going to be a different, with the street dance and that not taking place, at least so far, or some, unless something would go in there. But people want, not wanting to have to watch where they're walking to be on the riverbank, to even be, walk on the sidewalk and that. You know, and when, last, uh, fall, when they were, uh, finishing the concrete work on sidewalks and the seating and that, uh, lo and behold, here come a couple of couples with their 50-pound bags, throwing the feed out and that. I mean, it was, it's just, is that what we want to do? And by doing that, this here, by doing nothing, is that, that's, we're saying that's okay to do. That's what we, uh, not just okaying, now we are encouraging it, really, if that's the form of entertainment that we want to take place in this community, that, that, I don't think it is. So I, I would, I would, that's my discussion for this evening on, that I believe that we should prohibit the, the feeding of the birds in the city, in the city parks. And we can't just, it was, it, over all these years, too, it's been talked about, can we move them from here to there to different locations? You might as well put a road sign up and say ducks here, geese there, whatever, in the middle, or something like that, and you're, that's how far you're going to get with doing something. So, anyway, there you go.
Alderperson Coth, you're next.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just wanted to weigh in on the birds here, too. Maybe, hopefully, this is what I've seen of it, so it's, what we're trying to control is the geese, because the geese are the ones that are causing the problems. Inherently, people want to feed the ducks, but when you feed the ducks, the geese come along with it. And I know what we've talked about is, you can't just feed the ducks without getting the geese. And I know Joe, when I was on Public Works, talked about that, too, that if you stop feeding all of them, they'll, they'll all go away. But I, I think the problem with creating this kind of ordinance is, one, enforcement of it, and how are you going to go about it? It's just going to be too hard. I mean, I know when we're at Legislative Committee, and I still stand by it, of creating designated feeding areas, I think would be the best way to go. I, I think our goose control or geese control program is, is good. I think we should continue doing that to, you know, keep those numbers in check, but it's just feeding the ducks down by the river. I remember doing that when I was a kid with my grandfather, and I think that's, um, really hard to have people that have done that for generations to, to stop that. I mean, I think there's some abuse of it, like Tom said, when he saw people come down there with 50-pound bags of stuff to drop off, that's certainly an excess, but then it goes back to an enforcement piece of, you know, the police department's already got enough, enough on their plate to do already, and to have an officer down there to cite for overfeeding of the birds, might be a bit difficult for them to manage.
Any further requests to speak? I would just make a couple of quick comments. I think Tom hit it on the head that I think, you know, this is a, become a, we're trying to abate a nuisance issue, but we're creating more of a monster out of it, on the other hand. And we've done oiling of the eggs, as you mentioned, we've done geese roundups. I mean, it's expensive, it's a taxpayer investment, and we're encouraging it on the other end. And I think public health will tell us, as we will see, it's a nuisance. If you spend any time on the riverfront, in particular, there's, it's a nuisance. And I think, you know, I've taken just some pictures in the last week, there's, people are taking gunny sacks of corn, shelled corn, and dumping it in these parks. And I think if you're trying to encourage families and children to spend time down there, the last thing we want them to do is to be in an area where, that's congregated from, from geese, and that just the health concerns that get passed through by the feces, that's just predominantly in these areas where there's feeding. And I think our zoo offers a, a great duck pond, and, and we continue to promote that as an appropriate feeding area. We've got the right feed there. But I do think it's time for us, if, unless we're going to stop spending a lot of taxpayer money to do these other activities, we can't be encouraging a nuisance on the other end. In fact, it's kind of laughable that we do that. So, Joey, you had a couple of comments?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention, because, you know, because the department that I oversee ends up dealing with the issue, um, you know, if you go down by the theater, the popcorn and the bread and the other things that are left for the animals, it's not healthy for the animals. You know, you can do your own research, but that's the last thing you want to be feeding, feeding ducks and geese in, is, is bread and popcorn. We, we have a zoo. If someone wants to feed, they're, you know, if, if they want to do something on their own private property, I, I don't think there's an issue with that, but there's a serious health risk associated with the amount of feces that the geese leave in parks that we've invested in, and, you know, we want people to use and play. There, there really is a lot of effort that goes into our oiling program. It's not just go out and oil some eggs. We've got to record it. We have to prepare reports and get it to the DNR. You know, we had staff that we don't have anymore, that were used to oiling. So we're, we're calling people back to assist us in those endeavors. We're paying a lot of money when we do the abatement, and we get criticized and ridiculed from some of the public for rounding up these animals. That, you know, the, the meat ends up at a pantry, but, you know, these animals are rounded up and killed, and they're the same animals that we're feeding. These aren't transient animals. These are birds that are here year-round, and they're here year-round because people are feeding them. It really does have no business taking place in our public parks. Again, for, for the simple sake of, of the health risk associated, I, I really think that it's time that we do prohibit the feeding of waterfowl in our parks, and we can promote those activities that are zoo. You know, we have our animal feeding areas where, where kids can safely do that and be one with, you know, get to know the animals and have some fun. But again, it's, it's frustrating, the amount of effort that we put into getting rid of these animals, and then seeing that, you know, they're not even being fed healthy stuff. I mean, I, I think it's a, something that needs to be addressed.
See no further requests to speak, I guess. It'd be great to have some direction for staff, for the city attorney, to, to weigh in on this, this issue, if there's a desire by the council, so if it's not tonight, maybe through the form of a referral process or something would be beneficial. See no further requests to speak, this item, I guess, there was Alderperson Raym? Go ahead.
Thank you. If, if the route to go would be a referral, I would do that, to refer that back, to come up with, uh, an ordinance, you know, prohibiting the feeding of, of birds in, in the city parks. If I could make that referral now, or otherwise, at the end of the meeting, I would, I would, you know, let this, accept what the minutes were here and do it at the end, otherwise, I'd do that now and...
Do you want to make a motion to approve this item, then? And then have, like, can have the record reflect that to the effect? If you want to dispose of the business?
I'll approve the minutes.
Have a motion by Raym to approve item nine. Is there a second? Second by Coth. Any further discussion? See none? Please cast your ballots. The motion's to approve the minutes from the nine, the item number nine, and then refer
Motion carried, five ayes, one nay.
All right, we'll move on to, that takes care of the Legislative Committee, if I'm not mistaken. That takes us to item 11, reports of other committees, commissions and boards, departmental reports. Items A through F are listed there. Alderpersons, what are your wishes regarding those items?
Make a motion to accept the balance of the reports.
A motion by Coth, and a second by Katna. Is there any discussion on those? Seeing no requests to speak, please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, six ayes, zero nays.
Item 12, referral of communications to committees. Alderperson Blazer?
I've been sitting here trying to figure out the verbiage, and I haven't had a chance to talk, really, with the fire chief, but, um, we've talked about this a bit, and it's time to make, time to take some action. So I'm looking to make a referral to finance to discuss hiring a consultant to analyze the needs and space of the fire departments for, whether it be, uh, an addition or space allocations to accommodate dormitory and restrooms for female firefighters.
Thank you. Other items? I took one off of my list, I've got a list of them, so that takes care of one that the staff have been working on, and they've got a memo that'll go to council. It's actually, draft was circulated today. We'll get the waterfall feeding ordinance as well. But yeah, so I think within days, you'll see a, at least a, if not a referral, it'll be a memo on the matter. Couple additional ones. One is from the police department, related to a redirection of the Legacy Foundation grant toward the purchase of K-9 and K-9 support, but we would need to seek council approval because of the grant policy. So that'll go to finance next month. The other item is related to, um, security cameras at city buildings to include city halls, city garage, and perhaps fire departments, depending on access. That's something that the fire, sorry, the police department and IT will be working on, have been working on with that, so that'll go to finance. I'm not sure how close it'll be ready for a request for action, but it at least will be an update at the next meeting. There was one more. Anybody else have anything else? I'm looking at my notes here while I think that perhaps does it.
I have one.
Alderperson Raym?
I do have one more, and I, I, it's, it is something I brought up or talked about, whatever, several months ago, but anyway, uh, the Norton Pond area, where it's all posted, not, uh, at one time I had written it down, I don't have that with me anyway, but of, you know, nobody to be able to go in there. My question was, and it had been raised by a few people now, of, of why can't somebody just walk around it, or somebody that's biking wants to stop? It's a, it's a, actually, it's a nice grassy area or whatever around the pond. It would not be to use the pond for anything. It's not for fishing or swimming or anything like that, but it'd be if people could go in there. Maybe, uh, Joe, Public Works and that would have, would have a reason not to go along with it or not, but it had been, the issue had been brought up to me by a few people, it's been a while now, but I saw them again here in the last couple of weeks. And that, just wondering why that, in our, once in a while, if I do go drive down Norton Street and look through the trees, that can't see that somebody's in there anyway, I guess, but it's a, you know, it's not, it wouldn't be that, it'd be like a regular park, but it'd be a place that people could just go and walk around, so.
I recall my, oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
I wasn't sure if you were finished. Oh, the, the item that I was going to refer was, July, we'll begin starting to talk about budget, and one of the items that the Public Works Director, Finance Director, and I have been talking with is the capital improvements plan, which is the multi-year sort of plan, not just 2020, but perhaps something for Public Works to put on their radar for, not necessarily July, but August. We'd like to kind of take it outside the budget process for discussion, so that would be the other item. See no further requests to speak. I entertain a motion to adjourn. We had a motion by Coth, second by Raym, all in favor? All right. Any opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you all for being here. Nobody wants to oppose it.